Good evening to you all and welcome to our May 17 Town Council Meeting, a regularly scheduled meeting. Good to see all of you tonight, and when I say all of you, that seems to be several all of yous. We have almost a full audience out there, and we'll be hearing from, I know, some of you in a little bit. I'm going to officially call the meeting to order, and I will ask our Assistant Town Clerk, Ms. Ashley Knox, to call the roll, if you will, please, ma'am.
Mayor Marshburn.
I am present.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance.
Here.
Councilmember Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
And Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Thank you very much. As is our custom, we will now have Councilmember Behringer, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, to be followed by the invocation, so if you're able to stand and participate, we invite you to do that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being, justice for all.
Thank you.
Lord me, if you will. Father God, we come to you this evening asking for wisdom and mercy and grace. We ask for wisdom as we consider the information being presented to us and the decisions we are called on to make. We ask for your mercy in the Ukraine, and we pray for peace and for the end of the war there. And we also ask for protection for all those who are providing humanitarian aid. And we ask for your unmerited grace on us all as we attempt to carry out the responsibilities and the tasks that are set before us daily. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Behringer. Okay, as we usually do, we will begin this evening with a segment called "Petitions and Comments." This is the portion of our meeting where we receive comments from the public on items not included on the agenda. We encourage citizens to sign up in advance if they can, if you want to speak at the meeting, however, we will have some time if you didn't have an opportunity to do that. The council that you see before you is interested in hearing your petitions and concerns, but most likely will not take action or deliberate on subject matters that are brought before the council this evening. Topics including further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. So I know that there are any number of you who are here in support of a cause that I believe that you have designated, perhaps a person or two who wants to speak at this time, so I'm going to recognize, can I refer to you as a Garner Elite? This is a softball team that I believe desires to speak to us this evening, so come on up, ma'am, if you'll give us your name and address as you start, that'll be helpful.
Sure. My name is Leslie Lynette. I'm in 1145 Southern Meadows Drive in Raleigh, North Carolina.
Okay, thank you.
Really Garner, just outside of...
Okay.
So we come, thank you very much for taking the time to listen to us, mayor and council, we appreciate that very much. We're here this evening to introduce you to Garner's best-kept secret, the amazing growth of competitive travel softball, and our own homegrown Garner Elite athletes, as you can see. There's supposed to be somebody that's going to do my slide. There we go, perfect. To give a little background on our organization, in early 2018, the founding team hit the field. In 2019, we quickly expanded to four teams, and as a result of this quick growth, our organization incorporated in March of 2019. In 2020 to 2021, we expanded to more than six teams. Currently, in 2022, we have six teams representing the Garner Elite. That is just shy of 70 girls ranging 10 to 18 years old. Our teams play in over 100 tournaments a year throughout North Carolina and South Carolina. Excellent. What you see here on the slide is the photo of the 2022 Garner Magnet High School softball team. There are 18 girls on this team, and 10 of them play for a Garner Elite organization. Most have played softball in Garner since early in their athletic career. Athletes from Garner Elite have also been chosen to play at the college level with schools such as Meredith and Belmont Abbey. Number four, I don't know if that's the right one or not. As we mentioned, our girls play in over 100 tournaments a year throughout North Carolina and South Carolina. Just in case you missed it, that's a lot of softball. We do this while representing the town of Garner with not only the name on our jersey, but how we act and carry ourselves on and off the ballfield. We are well-known for our outstanding sportsmanship, high standards, and competitiveness. We uphold these values at all levels, from the organization founders, board members, to players, coaches, and families. We are proud to represent Garner everywhere we go. Historically, coaches, players, and families stay with Garner Elite for years. I believe there may be a few that would like to speak on the Garner Elite, what Garner Elite means to them. Or at least one, come on up.
Okay, thank you, and I will, I meant to say this upfront, this is fine, we want to give you adequate time, but we would ask you to kind of keep your comments to about three minutes or so if you can, okay?
Good evening. My name is Brittany Stevens. I am a sophomore at Garner Magnet High School, where I have been the starting catcher for the Varsity Softball Team for two years. I found my love for softball through the Garner Rec Program when I was 10 years old. I was introduced to travel softball, and shortly after that, the Garner Elite softball organization was formed, and I've been playing there ever since. We do our best to make Garner proud in everything we do, how we carry ourselves, even the colors on our uniforms. I wanted to say thank you to the town for always providing fields and facilities for young girls to be introduced to softball and give them lifelong friendships and memories they'll never forget. Thank you.
You.
I'm going to be quick. In 2021, our organization, along with Garner Sports League, was chosen to participate in the SAS Batting Lab. They specifically approached Garner Sports League and Garner Elite because as partners we have access to both male and female athletes of various ages. As a result, we were able to provide just what they were looking for in order to obtain the most amount of data, and there's a video on the batting lab. Very quick. So being able to partner with SAS obviously is quite, they're quite a large company, so obviously that's kind of given us a feather in our cap as far as our recognition in the area. Over the years, we have partnered with Garner Sports League to build a recreational softball league that helps to feed into Garner Elite. We work closely with them each week to carefully coordinate field space and practice times. With the amount of athletes that we have, this does not come without challenges. As Garner continues to grow, field space and practice times are going to continue to be a challenge and will most likely become more challenging. We've been blessed with the field space and practice times for our athletes over the years. This time has allowed girls to improve, making us competitive no matter where we play. In closing, we are extremely grateful to Garner for equal support of both male and female athletics. As an organization or as a team, we are here to show our support for more athletic fields in Garner, as well as continued equal support for female sports. Thank you again for taking your time this evening.
Okay, yes. So I'm going to ask at this time that all of you who are affiliated with this league to stand at this time, if you don't mind, be recognized. Wow, okay. Another round of applause for all of you. Okay, you may be seated for just a moment, if you will. I promise not to tell you any long stories about my... I have a strong interest in softball, and I started playing softball after I got out of college, and I was just thinking, your league is known as the Elite League. I guess the last one I played in, I'm not sure what the opposite of that is, but it wasn't necessarily the Elite League, but it was the Old Man's League, I guess you'd say. And so I did play in a league 50 and over, and then they graduated me up to 60 and over, and about that time I got involved in council stuff, and I had to drop out. But I love the game of softball, it's a lot of fun to play, and so I commend you, you're pretty serious players, if you're at the elite level, I'm sure. But I think at this time, Mr. Dellinger, I know, has some either direct or indirect involvement, so I'm going to recognize him for any comments he'd like to make.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've had the pleasure of serving on the Garner Elite Board since 2019, when it was incorporated, and I had the pleasure of working with a great board and great coaches to support great athletes, most of whom I've never seen before, but that's, they keep me around for bylaws and things, I think. But I do want to recognize one person tonight, that's Mr. Bill Oats, who started the first Garner Elite team. He doesn't want the recognition, he's a fellow optimist, so he's trying to stay below the radar, but I just want him to stand, so everybody give Bill a big round of applause. Just close by saying I'm very proud of the organization that we have all built together, and our reputation and values just speak volumes for Garner, so very proud of what everybody does.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Dellinger. Any other councilmembers care to make brief comments at this time, any?
Mr. Oats was also involved for many, many years with Garner Optimus Basketball, not just softball, but basketball, for a long time.
Very good.
I just want to say, Mr. Mayor, it's great to see so many young people doing such a wonderful job, you know, you've got the support of your family, I know a bunch of you out there, and I know you do a lot of traveling, and congratulations, and just keep on doing what you're doing. You set a big standard for a lot of younger people, younger than you, watching what you do, so be proud of yourself, represent yourself well, represent Garner well, and good luck on what's coming up. May you come out in first place in every game you play.
Thank you so much. So I know many of you were sort of interested as to when you might be able to get up and leave. Obviously, I don't control your comings and goings, but I would suggest, if you don't mind, we're going to do a couple of proclamations that I think have certainly meaning and purpose, and so I would invite you to maybe stick around for those, if you don't mind, it won't take very long, and after those, if you want to, you can feel free to leave at that time. We're going to have a business meeting, if you want to stick around for that, you can do that as well, but we'll let you go after that. So with that said, at this time, there are two proclamations that we're going to share, and I've asked Mr. Singleton, if he will, to share a proclamation recognizing National Public Works Week. And Mr. Forrest Jones, where are you, out there?
Public Works Director, will come up this way. A proclamation recognizing this week is, excuse me, National Public Works Week, whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of every citizen's everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, public buildings, solid waste collection, and snow removal, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, whereas the quality and the effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works personnel, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work that they perform. Now therefore, Ken Marshburn, the mayor of the town of Garner, does hereby proclaim the week of May 15th through the 21st, 2022, as National Public Works Week in the town of Garner, and calls upon citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the many issues involved in providing our public work services, and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and the quality of life. Signed by Mayor Ken Marshburn. And the folks in public works are the folks that keep the softball fields and the ballfields up and running, so that's a direct tie-in to what y'all have here. Forrest Jones, our Public Works Director and longtime Garner employee.
Thank you. So thank you, Mr. Singleton, thank you so much for those kind comments. Council, Mr. Mayor, members of council, just like to say thank you for your continued support, again, for issuing this proclamation recognizing public works. I'm proud to stand here and represent our team this evening. We certainly have a great team to work with, they strive to do a good job in public service, and so we just thank you for their support, and wanted just to truly say an opportunity to say thank you for them as well, so we appreciate what you do.
Okay, I think a round of applause would be appropriate. Okay, the next proclamation is a new proclamation, as you will see as it's read. Councilmember Matthews gets considerable credit for bringing this to our attention, he was involved and has visited at least one other town, probably several others, who have also received this designation, so I've asked him, if he will, to share this proclamation with you at this time, a Purple Heart Town. Thank you, Phil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had the wall come, the wall that heals, a few weeks back, did everybody get a chance to go look at that? As a Vietnam veteran, that meant a whole lot to me, and any veterans in here. It'd be hard to top that, but you young people, you can ask your grandparents or your parents what a Purple Heart is, and they'll tell you. Garner now, this proclamation, whereas the town of Garner and the state of North Carolina has always supported its military veteran population, and whereas the Purple Heart was initially created as a badge of military merit by General George Washington in 1782, and is the oldest military decoration in present use, and whereas the Purple Heart was the first American Service Award or decoration made available to the common soldier, and is specifically awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces that have been wounded or paid the ultimate sacrifice in combat with a declared enemy of the United States of America. And whereas the mission of the military order of the Purple Heart is to foster an environment of goodwill among combat wounded veteran members and their families, promote patriotism, support legislative initiatives, and most importantly, make sure we never forget. And whereas the town of Garner appreciates the sacrifices of our Purple Heart recipients made in defending our freedoms, and believe it's important that we acknowledge them for their courage and show them the honor and support they've earned. Now therefore, I, Ken Marshburn, mayor of the town of Garner, North Carolina, do proclaim the town of Garner is a Purple Heart Town. Signed, Ken Marshburn, mayor of Garner. Mr. Mayor, on behalf of the veterans in our community, I will receive this and make sure you get the original copy back. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Another round of applause. So, and I would say, Mr. Matthews, I anticipate that as a town, we will give some further public attention to this, maybe on an annual basis or at some time, it certainly will be...
Yes, sir, I think we're going, on Memorial Day, Monday, which is going to be a very big event, so put it on your calendar, I'll grab this moment since you brought it up, at Lake Benson Park, and it's a big event every year, and it'll be on Monday, I think it's at 9:30 on that Monday morning, so you're invited to come out, and then the mayor will officially read this one more time, and so, but we certainly appreciate the board voting to support this big event here, and it's going to be big. You'll see our signs, it'll be a big Purple Heart sign will be provided to welcome to Garner, so it's a very unique presentation, not that many in the United States, and we'll be one of them now.
Thank you, Phil, for your leadership in doing that. So, okay, to probably the great majority of our audience, I think I promised that after these occasions, we will invite you, if you care to, to go ahead and make your exit, if you will do so as quietly as you can, we're going to proceed in just a moment. But thank you all for showing up here this evening, it's a great crowd, great to see you. Best of luck to you for the rest of the season, okay? If you see any old guys out there, kind of encourage them, sometimes they could use a little... Yeah. Okay, while they are exiting, I think very quietly, I'm going to ask the council, if you will, to consider adoption of the agenda, you have it before you, and so that's the next item. Is there a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Thank you. Okay, properly, motion in seconded, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, and there is none. Also, of course, I put these out of order sort of on purpose, so we've had our presentations, and now before you is the consent agenda, there are seven items, I believe I counted, on the consent agenda, so unless any councilmember desires to have an item removed or for further discussion, I will entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Seven.
Second. Motion properly made and seconded. If there's no other discussion, if you favor the motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
And if there's any opposition, no, and there is none. Okay, thank you very much. All right, we're going to move now to the section of public hearings, and the first public hearing will relate to our budget. Ms. Jody Miller, Assistant Town Manager, will be the presenter here, and let me just mention, and maybe she was going to mention this too, but this is the second of two public hearings for the proposed 2223 operating budget. These public hearings provide an opportunity for residents to provide feedback and ideas for the town's proposed 2223 budget. The budget was recommended, excuse me, was presented to this council on May 2nd of this year. In addition, town council held its budget work session on May 12, just a few days ago, and I should mention this, online comments and ideas on the proposed FY2223 budget can be submitted, it's an online comment, I believe, Garner Budget Comment Form, that's on our website, I believe, is that right? Okay, having said that, I'll ask Ms. Miller, if she will, to lead us further into the process.
Yes, good evening, mayor, members of council. Tonight is the second public hearing on the recommended FY2223 budget, as the mayor described. I have a few slides that I'll review with you, just to provide an overview of where we are in the process, and a few highlights, and then, mayor, I'll turn it back over to you to open the public hearing this evening.
Sure, thank you.
As mentioned, we are getting close to the end of our process for the recommended budget for FY2223. The council has seen this slide on many occasions, but it's the slide that keeps us moving forward on our timeline to make sure we get our budget adopted in June. We started in February, and as you can see, our first public hearing was on April 4th. The recommended budget was presented by the manager on May 2nd. Council held its budget work session last Thursday on May 12th. Tonight is the second public hearing on the recommended budget. We have a continued budget discussion planned for the May 31 work session with council, and we're targeting the June 6 meeting for budget adoption. Highlights of the recommended budget include the following: the FY2223 budget totals almost $48.4 million, that's an 11.9% increase, and as the council is aware, and as we've discussed to this point, next year's budget has some challenges and involves some level of uncertainty. The revenues are based on planned tax increase, sales tax growth, permit and fee increases, and use of one-time funding. Timing of new revenue due to growth is challenging, and as we've talked about several of the challenges, this is one of the big challenges. Typically, a lag of four years or more happens between approval and additional revenue seen in the town's budget. In addition, the recommended budget includes a tax rate of .53.21 cents per hundred of assessed value, that's a planned 2-cent increase, as we've discussed. Using one-time funding included for perform, technology investments, and public safety equipment has been provided in the recommended budget. The budget includes reductions of about $2.1 million... The budget includes reductions of about $2.1 million, or about 2.9% of the operating budget. There are 15 new firefighters recommended in next year's budget for staffing of Station 5. They're budgeted for 10 months, and that's to make sure they are able to attend the academy in the fall, and they're fully trained and ready to staff the station when the station opens. And there are five decision packages funded that are focused on public safety. And as the mayor mentioned, the recommended budget is available on the town's website for any of those that would like to take a look at it. It's under the news section and on the finance pages. This year, we've also provided an ongoing opportunity for public comment and feedback on next year's budget, and this is an opportunity for citizens to submit comments using our online portal. And here's the information for the online portal. It's available not only from a link on tonight's agenda, but also under legal notices, news in the finance pages. That portal will be open until this Friday, May 20th. With that, Mayor, I will turn it back over to you to open the public hearing this evening.
Thank you, thank you very much, Ms. Miller. Okay, so, at this point, I will officially open the public hearing, and if there are persons here tonight for the purpose of making, excuse me, comments or observations about the, excuse me, about the budget, get my words out. Now would be a time, if you desire to be recognized, okay, this gentleman right here, met him a little earlier, yeah, if you'll give us your name and address, please, sir.
Yes, sir. My name is Rex Whaley. I'm at 102 Pine Way Street here in Garner. Mayor and council members, thank you for the opportunity to make some comments. I didn't know I'd be the only one, but that's okay. I appreciate all that y'all do for the town. I know that serving in the roles that y'all serve is a big commitment of time for you and your family, and I appreciate what y'all do for there, for that. You know, I've lived in Garner for almost 20 years, and it is a great place to live. I'd lived in other places in Wake County for a little while, and then saw Garner and had an apartment here for a while, and then finally bought a house here, because it's just a fantastic place to live. But I did have a few concerns when I saw the budget that was proposed for this year, and I just wanted to say upfront, you know, I'm not opposed to taxes. This is the first time I've ever come down to make any kind of comments about a budget. Taxes are necessary. I like police protection, fire protection, emergency responders, parks, greenways, we like, like nice streets, cultural resources and all that. So, my comments aren't intended to be just, well, I'm opposed to a tax increase. But what I did, I went out and looked on the town's website, and I could find some budget information going back to 1415, and so I kind of looked at it like an eight-year window. And during those eight years, because it seemed like, and I would watch some of the Town Council meetings the last few years, since they're available, you know, through YouTube and all, and it seemed like I thought, well, I thought we just had a tax increase. And I went back and looked in the last eight years, and I'd asked the town staff to, if I say something incorrect, because trying to read through those budget documents sometime is tricky to understand how things flow. But in those eight years, you know how many tax increases we've had? Six. Six increases in eight years. And one year, we didn't have a tax increase, our vehicle fees doubled from 15 to 30. So, really, in seven years. So, that sort of makes you wonder, you know, why do we continually need these increases? And I also looked in when I was reading about the 1415 budget, they made a comment in there that that was the first time there would be an increase in seven years. So, it's like that pendulum has gone from seven years of no increases, and now eight years, where we've had six increases. And I understand the town is growing, the needs, the demands on resources are, you know, through the roof, but I just think we need to kind of pause and look at what we're doing with the budget and what we're funding, what is truly critical and needed, and what really is optional. And I tried to add up those increases, because by my analysis of the information, for those increases, for those years, it's 12 cents over that eight-year period, which amounts to, the best I can calculate, it's about $200. But like, for me personally, when I look at my property, and I actually looked at my tax bills in that time period, it's an increase of like $400, because we always sort of use that average, but it impacts people differently. So, I was just asked that the council consider this cumulative effect of what we're doing, especially in such a compact time period. And then, you know, I have some concerns about some things in the budget, and would appreciate time with maybe some staff later, I won't take up time tonight. When we look at how we fund things, you know, how we, we put some positions in the budget for a part year, and then the full amount comes due in the, out the next year, and I think that may be leading to some of our issues with having to find additional revenues in the following year. I know there was a comment at one council meeting about projections and looking at the out-years and how we match everything up. Because I went and looked, and like, property taxes in 15 was 15.5 million, these were audited numbers, and 21, they were 24.2. So, you know, you're looking at like a $9 million increase, 58%, and sales tax, 5.5 million, in 15, 8.5, and 21, these are audited numbers, so that's a three million increase, about 55%. So, we are generating some revenues, so this constant need for sales tax increases is a little, little hard to sort of factor into all this. And then, I'm, I've just got a couple of more areas I want to talk about. Then, the other thing I want to look at is our Revenue Savings Program. I think it's a great idea, and I know y'all probably have done some good things with that money, but it seems to me that, if I'm reading the budget correctly this year, we're going to move about $800,000 of revenue growth into the savings program, and yet, we're going to have a two-cent tax increase, which is about a million dollars. And I think in, a couple of years ago, we had a, maybe a three-and-a-half cent increase, and we moved like a million dollars into the Revenue Savings Program. And so, from the outside looking in at this, it almost seems like we're, you know, we're raising taxes, one could argue, we're raising taxes to fund the savings program, because that money could have gone to fund the things that we're seeing. Like, this year, we're saying we need a two-cent increase of a million dollars. Well, $800,000 was moved to the savings program. So, and in some views, you could say, well, we're not using it to fund these other things, we're using it to fund the savings program. You know, there was, I think, some money in there for merit increases, 4%, like 300,000. Well, if you cut the merit increase back and maybe pause the savings program for a year, you don't need the two-cent increase, you've got a million dollars. And I think it's just ironic, I don't think there's a link, but 1415, we implemented the savings program, and we've had all those tax increases. So, just something I would like for y'all to, to think about, again, I'm not opposed to taxes, y'all have done a lot of wonderful things for Garner, so I just think that we need to really take a look at what we're doing, and I noticed here, we said that the budget's going to be like 48.4 million, you go back in 15, it was 26.6 million. So, you know, we're almost doubling the budget in like eight or nine years. So, there has been revenues there to do things, and in this budget, we're seeing a two-cent increase and an increase next year. So, that's going to put us eight out of 10 years with a tax increase. And again, not opposed to them, but it just seems like we've, we've gone from seven years of no increases now to, you know, a number of years with increases. So, I appreciate you giving me the chance to, to make those comments.
Sure. And, and I would just say a couple of things, Mr. Whaley. Thank you for taking the time to come up here, obviously, not a lot of people do that. And this, this is a budget still in, in process, but obviously, the, some of the basics that you mentioned are there, and so, you know, there'll be other times for us to debate and, and talk further about it, but I would say that in general, I believe this, this, this council is, is always trying to be fiscally responsible, and the growth of the town and a lot of other things have been, you know, a challenge for us, and those are positive things, but as we increase our population and service needs grow, there, there are challenges out there. And I won't emphasize this so much, but I don't know if you had the chance to, to look at the comparison of what citizens pay in other areas, I think you'll, you'll find some charts there that would indicate that the amount of either taxes and/or fees and stuff that people have to pay is certainly very competitive and at the low end. I'm not suggesting that that's an excuse, but it's sort of a fact. But, yeah, we'll, we're still working on and tweaking this budget, I don't know what the final outcome will be. Obviously, we have to pass a budget by the end of June, and so we will expect to do that. But your comments are well-taken, and I appreciate you taking time, sharing with us.
And I wasn't trying to be that critical of the Revenue Savings Program, because I think it's a great idea, but it's almost like we're trying to save money we don't have, because the way we're funding, like I said, we've got a fire station coming on. So, these future revenues, in a way, are committed, and for us to then go out and say, well, we've got these new revenues, and we can save part of it, but we're already committing those revenues by actions we're taking now. So, and, yeah, that chart, that does that comparison, I did look at that. The only thing I can't really tell by that chart is, it looks like it's based on average home prices, which I think Garner is probably, at that time, you know, lower, so it makes that calculation, when you apply the tax to the home value, look a little lower than some of the other municipalities. But, again, I think what y'all have done great, you know, there's been a lot of great things that have happened to Garner, so I don't want it to be viewed as all these as like negative. I just want y'all to pause and really take a look, and maybe look at what we've done the last eight years before we move forward. Thank you.
It's a reasonable request from a, from a citizen, and that's part of the purpose, certainly, of having these public hearings. Are there others here this evening who care to speak on the matter of our budget? Okay. I don't know if there's anything else from either of our assistant managers, is that right, or Jody?
No other comments for this evening.
Okay, all right. So, so there will be, let's see, I'm not sure if we're, did that say we're scheduled for another public hearing? I know we, we've got a-
So, we're done with the public hearings.
Right.
The online comment portal will be open until Friday, May 20th. The council is also scheduled to continue its discussion from the Budget Work Session during the May Work Session, which is scheduled for May 31st.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, okay. Anybody else here for purposes of coming on the budget? Seeing and hearing none, then I'm going to close this public hearing. Okay, and we'll go to our next item. I, I meant to mention early on that we appreciate the assistant managers filling in tonight. Mr. Dixon, our regular manager, is not, is not here with us in person, so they will be very effective in covering for him this evening. Thank you. Okay, we will next move to item number two, and I recognize Mr. David Banford, who is our Assistant Planning Director in regards to a street closing issue that he will share with us, and I will open that public hearing at this time. Mr. Banford.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. This is a street closing public hearing, and we received a petition to close a portion of the Wilmington Road right-of-way. And this is related to a special use permit that was approved back on February the 7th, 2022. The project was Beacon Commerce Park, which is a large commercial industrial flex space development of around 260,000 square feet for development at Jones Sausage Road and Wilmington Road. So, tonight, we would like, we would ask that you hold the public hearing, close the public hearing, and we will need to delay action until we get official consent from NCDOT, because Wilmington Road is a state-maintained road. And, and we do have a representative here tonight from the applicant to answer any of your questions. The plan is to get this on the Board of Transportation Agenda, probably late summer in July or August, and at that time, we anticipate NCDOT to, to give consent on the closure. So, I will, on the screen, I will show you a map of the proposed portion to be closed, and that is the area that is shaded here in gray. Jones Sausage Road runs along the, I guess, along the eastern or right side of this map, and Wilmington Road, the, the intersection starts here and then goes north. And north of this area, there are scattered single-family homes, and there's also a site that was recently approved for townhome development. There was a rezoning approved recently. Okay, so, the, the portion to be closed on this map is in orange, and then Wilmington Road will be realigned over to Calabar Street. So, the residences on Wilmington Road, and also the future residences from the approved townhome project, will use this new realigned road to access Jones Sausage Road. And there is also a signal here at this intersection, so this will improve safety. Currently, the residents on Wilmington Road have to come out, and they are forced now to make a right turn, and then they have to make a U-turn around to head towards I-40. So, in the future, they will be able to have, to, to be able to go left or right at the signal. And so, again, this, this project is currently under construction, and the proposed, again, the proposed portion to be closed is shaded here in, in gray. So, the right-of-way would be closed, and then, in the future, Wilmington Road would be realigned over to Calabar Street, and, and that would also be a public road. So, I am happy to answer any questions, and we do have a representative here tonight from the developer who may be able to answer questions about timing and construction and things like that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Banford, and, yeah, we'll, we'll entertain that person in just a few minutes, but council, now is the time for you to ask Mr. Banford any questions or make comments, and I'll start with Mr. Matthews.
Nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Anything from you, Mr. Singleton?
Peter's David, what you said, this is nothing new than what we've heard, have heard previously, knew what was going to be proposed to happen, and nothing-
That is correct. This, this was shown on the site plan for the special use permit.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Behringer. Thank you. Mr. Dellinger.
If you could just clarify what we're doing as council legally that is necessary for DOT to do what they need to do if this isn't our road or a right-of-way.
So, tonight, we would ask you to hold the public hearing and close it, and we would defer action to a later time. When we first, when the application first was presented to us, we anticipated that this would go to NCDOT in May, and we might have their consent either in late May or 1st of June. So, that schedule's been pushed out a few months. Under state law, NCDOT consent is a requirement for the closure of a, a public road or public right-of-way that's maintained by NCDOT. So, we, we're anticipating that we are going to get that, since they were heavily involved in the review of the special use permit in, in site plans. So, so they are aware of this, it's just this has to officially go to the NCDOT Board of Transportation and have them, I guess, make a decision on that officially. So, so we're asking to hold the public hearing, close the public hearing, and then we will come back to you at a later time, probably in late summer, and where you will take action to officially close the right-of-way that is shown on, on this map here. And this is approximately about 700 feet from the intersection, Jones Sausage North.
I'm still not clear on what, what we're doing, what the, what the purpose of the public hearing is in the process of DOT doing their work. I'm not sure why we're having a public hearing.
This is a somewhat perhaps unusual, maybe not-so-unusual situation, in that the street is within the town limits, it has been within the ETJ, I believe, before that, but the state still maintains the road. So, in addition to the state, if there were utilities in this, we would have to have either the consent of those utility providers, or we'd reserve utility easements through that portion. So, it's, it's a little bit unusual that normally you would have the consent of the abutting- property owners to petition, or at least a percentage of those, to petition to close a street. And that can be for safety reasons, or that can be for convenience. In this case, because NC DOT does maintain the road, their consent is required. And I believe, as Mr. Banford stated, normally you would get that consent prior to the public hearing, but, you know, as long as you don't take action, you can still hold the public hearing now and wait for that consent to come in. If the consent is not granted, then it will not come back to you for a decision.
We have done several of these over the years. The last street closing we have done was in 2017. And just like annexations and zonings, state law outlines a specific procedure that we have to follow. So we sent out certified letters to everybody on that road. We've posted signs, and we had to put an ad in the News &amp; Observer for four consecutive weeks. So there's specific standards that we had to follow. So this isn't something we haven't done before, but it's not something that we do frequently. But the last time was 2017. I don't remember which road that was. But we've done, I'd say, over the last probably 10 years, we've done about three or four, and they've been for different parts of town.
Oh, I can't recall the place, but I do remember a similar procedure when I served as a council member a few years back. Maybe more than one. Yeah.
No questions.
Okay. Anybody else? So I guess we can hear from the applicant now. You want to introduce that person, or I guess they can introduce themselves? Yes. I believe that's not necessary for this occasion, is that correct?
Right. This is a, this would be a legislative decision, so it does not have to be under oath.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Greg Sandreuter with the Beacon Commerce Park. My address is 104 Lake Cliff Court in Cary. Just as a brief overview, Mr. Banford, thank you very much for your explanation of the process. We hope to, just for your information, we hope to complete the final paving and striping of the road on June 15th, and by the end of the month, by the end of June, have the road open for traffic. Thank you.
Anybody have a question for this gentleman?
Is that, the question I have, just a, it has not been a, there's a high degree of confidence that this is going to go through and be approved by the board, rubber-staffed, and the abandonment of the right-of-way will take place, and you'll be able to do what you're doing now. I heard you say that the road will be striped, striped in June?
Yes, so the final asphalt and striping will be completed, we believe, June 15th, and by the end of June, the road will be open to traffic.
The realignment?
Yes, the realignment, that's correct. So we have a very high degree of confidence that this is a simply yet administrative process for NC DOT.
No comment.
Okay, thanks, sir. Thank you. I guess that's all. Yeah. Was there anyone else here present who wanted to speak to this issue? You want to have any of your cohorts here? You're the Lone Ranger tonight, is that right? Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, council, you see the, you see the request here, and that is that we conduct the hearing, which we've done, and we will hold or delay this action until we hear next from NC DOT. And did you give a date when we think we'll know something from them?
I did not give a date. I believe July or August is probably, probably is going to be one of those meetings in one of those two months.
So come back to us at that time?
I'd say late, late summer.
Yeah, okay. So no further action is required at this time, is there, Mr. Attorney?
No, there isn't.
Okay.
I mean, other than you can close the public hearing.
Right, okay, all right. I think we've heard from everybody. So I will officially close the public hearing, and the action will ensue after we've heard from NC DOT. Thank you, Mr. Banford. You're not leaving, so you got the next item as well, is that right? Okay. Item number three, conditional zoning map amendment for the CZMP 2110 Bennett Assemblage. All right.
Yes, sir. Mayor and members of council, this is a conditional zoning request, and this is what we call a Tier Two conditional zoning. There are written conditions, and there is also a master plan, sketch plan of the proposed development. If this is approved, the applicant still has to come in for full site plan approval. So master plan is just a conceptual sketch that lines up with their written conditions. The site's on Highway 401. This is on the west side of 401, directly south of Midway Baptist Church, which is about halfway up 401 from 1010 Road to the intersection of Olstage Road. Their request is to conditionally rezone 62.9 acres from Single Family Residential 40 to Master Plan Conditional District 249 for the development of up to 463 residential units. And the master plan breaks this out into 87 single-family, 106 townhomes, and 270 apartment units. In addition to the master plan, there are use restrictions and also architectural conditions proposed, and there's also conditions related to the amenities proposed for the development. So this is a vicinity map of the rezoning and project site outlined in orange. And the point right here, this is Midway Baptist Church here on the west side of Fayetteville Road. A little farther north, near the top of the map, is Swift Creek. This is where it crosses the road, and Lake Benson would be to the east of this site. 1010 Road is to the south, where the McCullers Development is, and also the Rand Village These are Google Street Views, which are fairly recent. They're about a year old. The picture on the left is looking north on 401 with the rezoning site over here to the left. And this other picture to the right is looking south towards 1010 and McCullers, and the rezoning site is here. This map shows the current existing zoning in this area of Garner. The predominant zoning on the west side of Highway 401 over to Lake Wheeler Road is R40, and this is a low-density, single-family district. It's usually a district where public water and sewer is not available. It does allow single-family uses and also agricultural uses. Directly to the east across 401, we have the 401 Assemblage Project, which was a planned residential development that was approved not too long ago, which has over 1,000 units. And that development does include single-family, townhomes, and apartments, and that is currently under construction. I believe the apartment site is Phase 1, and they are fairly close to submitting building permits. The building permits might actually be in review now, so that project is moving forward. The areas north of the site that do not have a color, those are currently in Wake County's zoning jurisdiction. We do have a small, I guess, area here that's not in our ETJ or zoning jurisdiction. To the north, we do have some commercial zoning and also a zoning called Traditional Neighborhood Development. That was for a project that has not moved forward called Swift Creek Station, which was approved in 2014. And to the south of the rezoning site, we do have service business and community retail zoning. This is where Cotsco is currently. We do have some other retail uses in the area, grocery store, shopping center, a couple gas stations. And on the west side of Caddy Road, we do have some apartments under construction. That was rezoned to multifamily 2 within the last couple of years. And that project is under construction, and I believe they've received certificate of occupancies for at least two buildings out there, about 96 units. So we do have some buildings that are occupied at this time. This chart shows the zoning history of this area of Garner, kind of the west side of Garner along Highway 401. The Swift Creek Station project that did not move forward, that's this case here from 2014. The case from 2017, that was the Terran of Garner ETJ expansion, where we took in, actually, this area from Wake County into Garner's jurisdiction in anticipation of future development that we would have control over those developments. We've had some other commercial zoning from 2017. Georgia's Landing, which has a 2019 case number, I believe that might have been approved in 2020. That is just north of, I believe, Swift Creek near Simpkins Road, and that is currently under construction. They have Platts in for us to review, so they will be recording lots soon and starting construction. The Cambridge Properties cases from 2019, those were the zoning cases on Caddy Road for the multifamily site. And then the 401 Assemblage Project that's under construction, that is this case here from 2020. And we had a recent zoning case approved on Caddy Road for a three-lock commercial subdivision that came in on the south side of Caddy, and that was recently approved. So back to the existing zoning of the rezoning site, it's low-density residential. Density is around 1.08 units per acre. Minimum lot size is 40,000 square feet, and this district allows stick-built, single-family, modular, and double-wide manufactured homes. There are some special uses permissible, including schools, community centers, civic and fraternal lodges, and public safety facilities. The proposed zoning is multifamily 2, Conditional District 249, and this request includes use restrictions and some other conditions. So these are the use restrictions here. In your staff report, I believe we have a full list of all the uses allowed in the MF2 zone, which may be around 20. So the applicant is proposing to restrict the uses down to only these three: townhomes, single-family cluster, and multifamily, which includes apartments. And a single-family cluster is single-family homes on individual lots. Under the cluster option, you can go to 5,000 and 6,000 square-foot lots. That is in exchange for perimeter buffers and more open space. I believe the typical open space requirement is 10% for a single-family subdivision for cluster. I believe it's 20 or 25, I think it's 20%. So you do get smaller lots, but that is in exchange for more open space. You do not get really increased density, but you do, it does give you some options for smaller lots. So in addition to the proposed use restrictions, the applicant is proposing the following amenities, excuse me. For single-family, the amenity area shall include a minimum 6,000-square-foot clubhouse with a fitness center, a minimum 3,000-square-foot swimming pool, a minimum 2,000-square-foot dog park. And these are all to be constructed within 24 months of issuance of the first single-family building permit. For the townhome portion of the project site, the following amenities are proposed: a minimum 400-square-foot shade structure to be constructed within 24 months of issuance of the first townhome building permit. And for the multifamily portion of the project, the amenities shall include a minimum 3,000 square-foot clubhouse, a minimum 2,500 square-foot swimming pool, and these will be constructed within 18 months of issuance of a multifamily building permit. We have use restrictions. We just went over what the amenities are proposed for the project site. Now we're going to get into some conditions that deal with architecture and quality of construction. For multifamily apartments, no vinyl siding. A, cementous siding that shall vary in type and color with brick, shakes, board, and batten, or stone accents provided as decorative features. The masonry component shall be a minimum of 50% per building. B, other accessory buildings may only have a masonry wingscott. C, offsets in the plane of each facade for each apartment building. D, either masonry, embellishment, or 1x4 casing on all windows. E, slab-on-grade foundations with masonry extending all the way to the ground with no visible exposed slab. For the townhomes, these are the proposed conditions. A minimum heated square footage would be 1350. Each unit will have at least a one-car garage with either the dimensions of 12x20 or 10x22. Cementous siding. D, turned-down slab with 12-inch exposed on front. Front and sides shall be covered. Rear slabs shall have paint to cover exposed concrete. E, articulation in the side elevations, including two of the following: side entry windows, two or more. Partial masonry, two types of finishes. Example, horizontal siding with board and batten, or shakes and gables, and roofline changes. F, first floor glazing consisting of one or more of the following: garage doors with glass windows, or front doors with windows or side lights. G, 8-inch minimum eave and rakes on front, rear, and sides. For the single-family, the home shall have a minimum of 1,500 heated square feet with cementous siding. C, two or more types of finishes on the front: lap siding, masonry, shakes, and board and batten. D, turned-down slab with 12-inch exposed on front. Front and sides shall be clad with brick or stone veneer. Rear slabs shall have paint to cover exposed concrete. E, first floor glazing in the absence of traditional windows by including front doors with a window or side lights. And F, 8-inch minimum eaves and rakes on front, rear, and sides. So that concludes the proposed zoning conditions. So we have use restrictions, we have conditions on amenities, and also architectural conditions for the multifamily apartments, the townhomes, and the single-family. The character of this area on 401, 401 is a major thoroughfare with a significant amount of traffic. We do have two activity centers around 1010 and 401 along the McCullers area, that's an activity center. And we also have activity centers north near 401 and Highway 70, and where Mechanical Boulevard and Garner Station Boulevard intersect. This shows NC DOT traffic counts along 401. We are still waiting on 2021. Traffic counts in those will probably be out this summer. Traffic counts are taken in odd years, and it's usually a year after they take the count that that data is available. 1941 had approximately 39,000 trips per- Nineteen forty-one had approximately thirty-nine thousand trips per day in the vicinity of this project site. The neighborhood meeting was held on March the twenty-ninth, and this was at the Avery Street Recreation Center. There were two in attendance, according to the summary report that we received. And because the lots are so large in this area, there were only fourteen properties that fell within our notification radius for both the neighborhood meeting and also the public hearing. And next, we'll move on to the master plan. I'm gonna let Jeff give that presentation.
Good evening, Chair.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Jeff Treasenberg, Planning Director. Yes, I'll give you just a brief here overview of the master plan information and next steps. So as David mentioned, the area that we're talking about is this sixty-two point nine acres. The lot maximum for MF two generally would be, you could have five thousand square feet of development area for your first unit, and then an additional three thousand square feet of area for each additional unit. That's how we typically would approach it. You would probably get a number that is higher, though, than than the next part, which is that the MF two cluster residential development area is limited to six dwelling units per acre. This does fall within the Swift Creek Land Management Plan. So the town homes and and single-family portion are held to that standard. Again, there is a maximum of four hundred and sixty-three units with the eighty-seven single-family, one hundred and six town homes, and two hundred and seventy apartments. We provided the minimum lot widths and setback information for you for the various components. You can see those there. But overall, here is the master plan. I'll take some time here just to point out a few things. You'll see the apartments here located between what is a proposed kind of north-south two-lane boulevard and four oh one, with some enhanced landscaping here along four oh one as well. So you do have what looks to probably be an interior-type apartment component on the southern end, and something a little more traditional perhaps here on the northern end. I'll let the applicant speak to that a little bit more. You can see here some outbuildings, which are probably garage units. The apartment complex has its own pool and amenity center. You do see some lawn areas, open areas within the parking lot, which is nice to kind of break up the pavement. You do have an open area up here to the north, as well as this little pocket here on this corner. Then kind of rotating here in a clockwise direction, we have the town component, town home component in the southwestern portion of the site. Some of these are alley-loaded, if not all. I think all of them are actually, except the ones here on the outer edge. So you will again see kind of a a mix of of product within this town home component as well. There is some open space here, including some covered shelter and recreation area. And then northwest corner, we have the clustered single family, which again has its own amenity, I believe to be shared with the town home components. We also have private trails. This particular creek, Pope's Creek, does not fall within the Parks Rec kind of Greenway Master Plan. There are some challenges with with extending a public greenway further to the north. So the applicant has, though, used the stream corridor as an opportunity to extend the trail system to provide some active exercise kind of components for their residents in the neighborhood. And then kind of bisecting this all on an east-west category will be a new east-west collector facility. That would be, we programmed this in the transportation plan to be an alternative to Manor Ridge Drive, which is a little bit further to the north. That is a connection that runs between Lake Wheeler Road and four oh one, but runs right through the middle of an old county subdivision, so there's lots of individual driveways along it. I'm not sure right offhand what the traffic counts are like on there, but this would eventually then be an alternative that would not have individual driveways. That would be much easier to make that east-west connection between four oh one and Lake Wheeler Not that there's going to be a huge demand for traffic apart from what's kind of internally generated. We have seen recent model updates from Campo that do factor in five forty and the forty widening and things of that nature. What we've, kind of a high-level takeaway from that is that, once that opens, we expect the east-west connections through this part of town to be largely free-flowing, or let's just say minimal congestion. If the if the model holds true, I think folks will will see that ten-ten road will be vastly different, so we'll wait and see on that. But it's still the the north-south roads that tend to be overly congested. And so we do feel that this north-south boulevard here at least helps to prevent, as as the parcels to the north and south develop, keep some of those local trips from having to go out onto four oh one, and provide some relief and reserve some capacity there. Again, on the single-family side, much like the town home side, I did want to point out these are alley-loaded products, so the garages will be in the back. The only front-loaded product would be here again around this outside drive. The project will have three points of access on four oh one with those stubs, as I noted, to the north, south, and west. All three of those points of access will be ride-out only onto southbound four oh one. This is a section of four oh one that's being converted to super street, so there won't be any outgoing lefts from this subdivision. Within the TIA, there were two alternatives studied. There will be one northbound left at that central access point, that east-west newly constructed collector, I think, or I may have to let them clarify. There also was an alternative with a second northbound left at the northern access point. DOT reviewed both and was fine with both, but I believe that there is one preferred, and again, I'll let the applicant speak to that. We talked about the collector and the boulevard internally. Sidewalks will be provided on both sides of all streets that are not alleys, and the pedestrian experience, as noted, will be enhanced with those private trails through the open space areas. U S four oh one will be widened to its full cross-section of three southbound lanes with dedicated turn lane and storage improvements, as directed by DOT. For landscaping and buffer requirements, again, at the time this is submitted, we do have the sliding scale for residential products of of twelve to fourteen. The master plan does envision a twelve percent canopy just via via preservation, so the overall number will be much higher once the other required landscaping is added in. So that preservation alone will will meet or exceed seven and a half acres. There are buffers around the entire property, partly because of some of it being a cluster development. Otherwise, the town homes and apartments also have buffer requirements, so you'll see those at play. Four oh one, though, is has just that seven and a half foot wide street buffer, but again, they've done an enhanced area there along four oh one with preserved and new vegetation. And street trees will be provided again, per usual, at an average of David mentioned the higher level of open space required for the cluster. That actually is twenty-five percent. So there will be at least seven point three eight acres within that single-family cluster area, and then the remainder of the site is a minimum of ten percent, or three point three four acres. Again, having reviewed the master plan, I don't think there's any concerns that staff has about them being able to meet those minimums. There are no FEMA-designated flood planes along Pope Creek, but there is a riparian buffer that runs the whole, pretty much the whole western and northwestern portions of the site. Water and sewer service, of course, will be provided by the City of Raleigh. There is existing water in four oh one. Sewer would be collected at an onsite pump station and conveyed by force main into the gravity lines east of four oh one. I have a feeling that the final route will probably take them into the four oh one assemblage project that is being done by the same development group. There will be extensions as well to adjacent and upstream properties per Raleigh's policies. Again, here's the other outstanding items that staff will be checking at preliminary plat review, which includes fighting, stormwater management, waterline hydrant spacing, and landscaping, and parking. And again, for next steps, when considering these requests, the planning commission will be asked to make their written recommendation back to you based on towns' adopted plans. And then it will come back to you to determine whether or not the request is reasonable. And so our public hearing recommendation at this time would be to go ahead and hear comments, concerns, and questions from the from the public, and that the rezoning request be referred to the planning commission for them to carry out their portion of the review process. I will say that there are, there are some small details that are being worked out between staff and the applicant. It's nothing that regarding things that need to be added or taken away, but just more of details as to specific street cross-sections, the size of some of the amenities, and things of that nature. So we will have those, though, worked out prior to planning commissions, so that planning commission knows exactly what they're reviewing and giving a recommendation back on. If I have any questions, I'd to try to answer them, and the applicant is here as well, I think, to give a short presentation and answer questions of of you all as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Treasenberg. Ms. Behringer, I'll start with you if you have any questions. Mr. Treasenberg. Okay. I'll go down to Mr. Vance.
No questions at this moment?
Okay, Mr. Ellinger.
A couple of questions. One is related to the property to the west at a hundred and thirty-one acres there. Is there anything pending or talked about for the development of that property?
I'm not aware of anything at this point in time. Are you aware?
I'm sorry, I did not hear the question.
This property over here, has anybody inquired about that?
We don't have any inquiries on developing that property. The property owners did reach out to me either regarding the public hearing, or maybe the neighborhood meeting, and just ask some questions. They did not have any concerns, and I, it's not like, I don't believe that they have any plans to develop their site at this time, but that could always change. And their property has direct frontage on Lake Wheeler Road.
Asking for that east-west connection future there. Another question, why this rezoning is for MF two and not a PRD? What were the, some of the benefits or constraints? Was there a reason, and some of the other developments in that area of rezoned to PRD versus?
I think it very easily could have been done either way. I don't know that the outcome is really much different. I'll let the applicant speak as if as if there was any particular reason on their behalf. But but overall, given, given the open space requirements and the fact that they had to do the twenty-five percent, and it does have to qualify as open space, and then by carrying it south to the town home component, I would be be surprised if if this didn't also meet standard PRD regulations as well.
Last question, excuse me, is what was sort of the conversation around this not being consistent with our land use plan? And it's designated as a mixed-density neighborhood center, which by description has commercial components to it. And there are residential classifications in the future land use plan that are based on density, low, medium, high, multifamily. So I guess my question is, it being inconsistent with the land use plan with no commercial component to it, what was the rationale for that?
Yeah, so David was mentioning that the the way that's worded may kind of leave commercial as kind of an optional kind of consideration, but maybe not necessarily required. I do know when we had the discussion with the same developer on the east side of four oh one, there was a question about the demand for commercial space this far north and being kind of between the Simpkins Road area and the ten-ten road area. They did reserve some space there on their eastern project for some commercial space, and there was talk of it early on as part of their scope, initial scoping meeting. But I believe that when they kind of did their study, it kind of further backed up what they were finding on the other side of the road as well, but I'll let them speak to that.
Okay, I can come back to you in a little bit, Mr. Ellinger. Let's see how many we've asked you. Mr. Singleton?
Yes, Jeff and David, a couple of questions on the four oh one access. Based off the the traffics TIA we have here, the distance between coming from north to south, driveway one to two is seven hundred feet, and two to three is about five hundred feet, then they'll proceed south to do the loop. And they do have just limited access, left turn only, the median break there. That's what that is for that, it's the super street or whatever the name of this thing can be called when it's done. Correct. It's just the left turn, those are just left turn onlys into driveways one and two. Correct. Or side access one and two. Okay. I'll wait till the applicant, I'll ask him a couple of questions about their amenity areas. I can blow the map up, it's, I can see something in different writing than the one that you have on the screen versus what we have, so it was good to see. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Matthews?
Nothing is time.
Okay. Everybody says. So, Mr. Bamford and Ms. Treasenberg, you are finished? We're ready to hear from the applicant now? Okay. Not sure who that is, but I'll recognize, yeah, okay, you'll start, huh? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Beth Blackman with Tim's Group. I look forward to being in front of y'all again. It has been a little while, probably since the four oh one assemblage on the other side of the road. We are working with the same developer on this property as well, and so we're continuing, we're excited to continue working in this area of Garner and making this entrance to Garner from the south, you know, show its potential and growth. I want to thank staff for working through this master plan process with us, and we have worked significantly on on this, transitioning to how we present a master plan for y'all with your new rezoning, working on the new UDO. And so this was a learning experience for all of us, but I think it has turned out well with a a presentation piece that is easier for the general public, council members, and everyone to review and and kind of see what's being presented versus kind of a traditional site plan. So as Mr. Bamford said, the property is currently zoned R forty, and it is located in the mixed-density neighborhood center. And when I read the comprehensive plan, I do read that as more of a residential with the option for commercial. It is at the very fringes of that mixed-activity focus center. So the way I look at it is it's a prime residential site to support the heavier, more intense mixed uses that you would get closer to the intersection. Transportation plan calls for four oh one to be widened to the ultimate six-lane section. So this section, actually, the part that's across from the four oh one assemblage, would actually be widened out to its complete extents. Obviously, that won't be continuous all the way north and south. And then the collector street, east and west, is shown on the transportation plan. We have talked with staff several times about the location, the street section for that. The way I look at it is, we are definitely agreeing to put in a collector street that trends, lines up with the leftover that is agreed to by DOT, and would eventually make its way to Lake Wheeler Road through the Matthews property. But we don't have exact details about But we don't have exact details about what that street section should be, but we are amenable to working with staff and coming to an agreement on that. So we're not going to argue about, you know, that process. We're definitely willing to work with staff to come to an agreement on that road section. We did hold a neighborhood meeting and Midway Baptist Church representatives attended as well as the Matthews family. I think the staff report said the Stevenson's family, but it was the Matthews family that attended. We had a really good conversation. We mostly talked about utilities and road connections. They, the Matthews family prefers the stub street location that is shown on this. We also talked about at the time, because we previously had thought a greenway was going to be required from parks and rec plans, but it does not actually show up. So we changed to more of an internal greenway network, which the Matthews were appreciative of. They, in that meeting, we did discuss that they had no interest in developing anytime soon, but they were excited about Raleigh's policy for ensuring that all upstream properties have access to sewer and, you know, the potential for future development, but not anytime soon. Mr. Trezenberg touched on that it was located in the Swift Creek Land Management area. We worked through that to make sure our town home and single family cluster density would met the requirements. Obviously stormwater will be required and impervious restrictions will be met as required. One last thing that you asked about was why we didn't do a PRD. Basically, I think it looks and feels like a PRD. Their math for a PRD is a little bit different than the math for an MF2. And so the numbers don't quite work with a PRD, but you in the end, I think, definitely get the same amount of open space and gotten with a PRD. So also with me tonight, I have Scott Copeland with RST Development. Jeff Hoconado, our traffic engineer is here as well. And please let me know if you have any questions.
Okay, we'll let you know right now.
Thank you.
Mr. Singleton, I know you said you wanted to ask the applicant. I don't know if it's this lady or I'll let you?
Yes, this lady will do a fine job in answering these questions, I'm sure. Ms. Blackman, I, this map is states the amenity areas that you have. And you also have some green space left, separate pools, separate clubhouses, open area. These spaces up in the north part by the apartments, there's a, a green area there, a smaller one down south. I'm just looking at open space like where kids can go out and roll a ball and play in a small area of actual flat space, which we seem to lack in so many of our developments. That's just what I'm, I'm, I see you have shade structure, outdoor seating. We have a neighborhood park, shade structure, outdoor seating. So you've encompassed quite a few small play area, park areas within here, plus a 2,000 square foot, I believe, dog park in here somewhere also. So you've tried to address some of the needs of a small, almost self-contained neighborhood community.
Correct. And yes, some of these would be programmed areas, you know, the things that we have called out in different locations, but we definitely want to leave some of these areas as that more passive, somebody's just going to split a blanket, spread a blanket and, you know, read or something, somebody who's going to go play with their kids and have that area to throw a fishby or, you know, kick a ball around. So there would definitely be programmed areas, unprogrammed areas, access to the natural with the greenway trails. And then obviously your, you know, true recreational amenities like the pool and stuff like that.
And some of the apartment areas, I noticed, got a covered garage type, it states on one of them, some of those, those rectangular white boxes are garage, covered garage areas, correct? Within the multifamily?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, just wanted to confirm. Okay. That's what I have now, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Matthews, anything?
Is this right where the, used to be a Matthews and Gentry store and that's the Go Slow Toe? Is that going to take up that entire area is what I'm thinking?
So, so Go Slow Toe is just to the south of this?
Okay, so that will remain?
It, it will. And it actually has a full access median break there and that is also supposed to remain.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Behring, anything? Ellinger?
Mr. Trezenberg, could you pull up our land use map from our website, our land use plan? The one that has the different categories on it? Another one that has categories listed out on it. You know what I'm talking about?
Are you looking for the descriptions? Okay.
If you scroll up to, there's an entire section of residential land categories. There we go. So these are what are designated as our residential land use categories. These are for residential development. There's low density, medium, high, multifamily, all relating to specifically exclusive residential development. If you'll scroll down to the mixed land use categories, so this is where I'm not seeing the consistency with the land use plan and a multifamily development in that there's a, this is designated mixed density neighborhood center. And everyone can read it, I'll read it. The mixed density neighborhood center may include a mix of residential densities and has the densities. And then with, it's not the, may is not part of the with. It's with incremental commercial uses integrated within a community and can be adjacent to the town center category or on the periphery of established mixed use. Development, self-contained, self-supporting neighborhoods is also encouraged and may include individual offices, retail storefronts, other services. And then it goes on, and it does want to describe limitations on other non-residential use. So I'm, because there's a whole slew of categories that are strictly residential, this is intended to have a commercial component to it. And so I'm wondering why there's not a commercial component? And I say this in the context of how we're growing and developing in an unsustainable way by only having one-dimensional revenue streams coming off of property. Real, why is there no commercial component to this?
Well, I will say from, from when I look at things and I look at land use maps, I don't look at just one parcel, because that's where it does get tricky. Can you make every single little parcel have every component? If it doesn't all fit or it doesn't all financially work or you don't have, sometimes, you know, then the project just doesn't work out. I try to look at the whole area. So to me, if you look at the whole yellow area that is the mixed density residential neighborhood and you're getting a mixture of both types of uses in that area with good or bad, yes, the commercial going where the commercial tends to want to go, which is more at an intersection where it has access, you know, it is much more difficult to get retail to be able to support itself in an area where it doesn't get the, you know, the through traffic and it would be just depending on a neighborhood. It would have to have something that would have enough of a draw. So that is my explanation for why it doesn't have a commercial. The developer may can speak to some of the conversations that they've had with various people who'd be interested in commercial development. And then I don't know what all other conversations staff had about the consistency or inconsistency with the land use plan.
That's just my, my biggest concern. There's not, it's a mile and a half from 540. It's on the biggest thoroughfare that we have in the town. So we talk about traffic and cars moving. There's so much residential development on that corridor. And when I overlaid this lot size over a development that's going over in Kiery, Fenton, for example, it's the same acreage, overlaid it over midtown up in Raleigh, it's actually the same acreage as almost most of what's on the north side. And calculating out the revenue generated from just that 65 acres would be almost 10% of our town's budget. And I say that because we're doing the same things over and over again with just pure residential development. You're not capturing any additional sales tax revenue. We're not. We're not getting the density we need. We're getting, we're not creating places to work. We're not creating places to eat, creating places to play or gather. It's just neighborhood after neighborhood. And one thing for it to happen, but then it's sort of in, completely inconsistent with the land use plan that was developed over a long period of time, way before I was here, where it was said, this is what we want here and this is not what the rezoning is for. So that's. Essentially, we're going to have to change how we're doing stuff in Garner, or we're not going to be fiscally sound. And we need our development partners to understand that and be a part of that. So that's my last comment.
Okay, thanks, sir. Mr. Vance, did I give you a chance?
Questions?
Just one comment. We know Wake County is growing and we're a big part of that. You know, we're going to listen to anywhere from 70 to 100 people a day is moving into Wake County. We know there's a big housing shortage, whether it's apartments, condos or freestanding units. Everything that's built is sold out, especially in Garner area, just as soon as it's built and there's a waiting list. And I hear what my colleague is saying, but just south of there, we've got that McCullers crossroads, we've got major, major corporate business there. And we're, and we're putting a fire station in that area in anticipation of this type of growth here. And there's a lot of land out there. And I think, you know, I know staff's going to work on some projects here, looking at some, some things that you guys are still working on to improve it. But there's a person I like the project, I think's in a great location out there and there's tremendous need for all three types of this housing. And, and this, you know, there's still plenty of room for commercial development around there. Already around it and just right south of it, there's mentioned is land right there. His business is already on it. So I think some, on the front side, it probably just looks good and it's badly needed. There's going to be a lot of growth down there. So I'm actually see how they tweak everything to bring it all together, which I'm sure they will. So just a comment.
Mr. Matthews? By the way, I love this speaker thing.
I'm sorry?
I love this fact, speaker thing. It makes it much easier, the new speaker.
All right. Was there anyone else who's presenting from the applicant? I believe you. No? Okay, no, no one else? Okay. So, any other questions for our staff? I think we're about ready for a motion. I think the proper thing or what we're being asked to do is to refer this to the planning commission for planning consistency review and the recommendation. But if you have other questions here now? Oh, excuse me, yeah. Yep. Yeah, I'm sorry. Please come forward.
Thank you. My name is Dan Matthews, 78, 7801 Lake Wheeler Road. I'm representing the Matthews that is concerned about the 131 acres. That was not the comment. When we had the meeting, there was no need for me to tell him I was concerned at that point in time because it was just a preliminary, shake hands, hey, we're here, this is what we're planning. Okay. Give you a little background, I was in development and I'm still licensed highway contractor for 33 years. So I know how all this works, was the planning, developing, everything. Our family's been on this piece of property since pre-1800s. So is Tommy Matthews and he couldn't be here tonight because obviously they're running for sheriff. But Brenda will be speaking on his behalf. But on our behalf, on our family, we do have some major concerns. I'm not against development, not one of those kind of guys. I know how it is. If you don't have development in town, it dies. Understand that. You know, I've lived around here all my life and watched development through five generations. It can't be stopped. I was part of it. But unfortunately, a lot of outer towners come in and they just jump in, do what they want to do, make their money collectively and they leave. There's no support left and there's no concern about the people that are already here. We've been here, we haven't been against it, but there's some issues that we do have that I have brought to their attention with no response. So the first thing is, we did do a plan on our farm back in '09. Had approved plan, site plan, flood study, everything done, got a permit from Wake County at that point in time. We just wanted to see what our plot would look like. We, at that time, was when the corridor was attention to us. Funny, everybody mentions corridor running through your property, but nobody seems to be concerned about it, you know, but it is our property. So, you know, and I'm not, you know, I know, it happens. It's just the way it is. DOT, we've dealt with them for years. I did the road widening at our church over here, Calvary Baptist right there, worked with Fuquay and y'all. Went with Fuquay, board, did the same meeting with Cambridge on the widening stuff up there with Costco's. I've dealt with all that. The issues I have mainly with them is the corridor road is not exactly lined up with what we had. We did do a flood study on our property. We have a tremendous pond back here. I just fought Wake County over getting it switched from, they had proposed it as a lake and I got tired of people coming over to our property, wanting to know when they could go fishing at the lake. I said, there's no lake back here, it's a pond. So they, the road they initially had proposed was going right into the wetland, wettest part of our farm behind the dam. So we made a little bit agreements to them because we'd already established our road to line up with Denly Road to come straight through. Knew that was going to happen. So we put our foot in the ground with DOT years ago and established that back in '09. That was done in a blue plan. Given that, we did a flood study. So we know what we have. On their end, however, they haven't done any studies whatsoever. All they're doing is they're trying to get the zoning. And I understand, you know, you have to zone it. They haven't closed on the property. They're getting their zoning done to see whether it's legitimate for them to develop it. I understand that. I've been on that road. The problem I have with it is, however, there's a lot of logistics in here that between me and my cousins, we own over three and a half times more property there than what they're planning. So I think overall, there should be a lot of questions answered on this before everybody just throws in, oh yeah. And you say, well, it's just a zoning change. No, you're not. You're developing. Whether zoning or not, when you do that, you've already planned your water, your sewer, your streets, it's a done deal. It's just a preliminary from that point of where you're going to plant the grass and where you're going to plant the trees. I know that because I've been behind in y'all's deal doing this. So first thing is the creek crossing, okay? Like I said, they haven't done a flood study and we mentioned them, by law, when you do a subdivision adjacent, you have to bring the street to the property line. That is the law. You have to bring the sewer to the line. You have to bring the water to the line. You have to provide adequate drainage to the sewer from all the surrounding areas that drain to your lift station. That is the law. Now, they're proposing, okay, we're going to do a fee in lieu of. In lieu of what? You haven't proposed anything. You have no creek crossing design, no plans. So basically what they want to do is come in, get their zoning approved, get their deal done, get their money in their pocket, leave town and leave me and my family with over 200 and some acres here stuck with the bill. Because in the future development, there's, they, they mentioned to us, well, we do a fee in lieu of. And we've had this concern three or four times. I know they're engineers. I've worked with them. I've done work for them in the past. I know who everybody is involved. And I mentioned to them, I said, look, where's your flood study? Well, we hadn't done one yet. We don't really see need to. What? We're not going to do a flood study? Okay, so am I the one that needs to call DWQ and let's ask them about this? Because this is a major, this is Swift Creek Township. I've been down that road with Swift Creek Township. I'm a little confused as how this is getting done in the Swift Creek Township. Now, I understand the retention ponds, we call them mosquito holes, but those retention ponds are supposed to compensate for the Swift Creek Township. I understand that. And I'm, like I said, I'm not opposed to their subdivision, not opposed to that. I'm just opposed to us being left with the bill. I don't have any intentions of us, to answer your question, I don't have intentions of doing any development on our property. Right now I have my cows on there and we cut trees and we Right now, I have my cows on there, and we cut trees, and we tend the farm, whatever it had. Grew up there priming the buck in those fields. So I really don't have any intentions of going anywhere. But in the future, I don't want my children and my sister's children stuck with the bill that my kids go, "Wow, why'd y'all do this to us?" Now, we can't afford to do anything, because we're stuck with a corridor road, and we're stuck with a creek crossing. And, you know, as gentlemen said, they're going to put a lift station in and give us a easement to their lift station. It's not the way it works. They're supposed to provide a manhole over to our property. So, you know, the part that's not shown here is Pope Branch. You know, they're talking about us having to cross the branch to get to their sewer. Now, that's an extreme impact. And I don't have to tell you, y'all, you know, the impact fees involved in that. There's an impact fee involved in the creek crossing. And like I said, there's no studies done on any of this. You know, there again, that's one of our concerns, the cut through, the traffic, the water line. You know, I don't know what else to tell you, but, you know, obviously, I think it's way premature to be zoning right now when three-quarters majority of landowners around you are asking, "Okay, I'm not here saying, 'Don't do this for them.'" I think there's too many unanswered questions right now to just turn them loose with this and say, "Oh, yeah, well, the Matthews, y'all been here for over 200 years, y'all just stuck with the bill." I don't see that that's adequate when we've been here. We've been supporting the community, supporting the town. And an outer tanner comes in and leaves us holding the bag. Because as y'all well know, if they just do a flood study, they don't do a flood study, and they just say a fee in lieu of. Fee in lieu of what? Concrete's going up every day, everything else, and then we'd have to pay a cross creek crossing? I mean, I've been involved in some creek crossings that cost a half a million dollars. So, you know, is that really fair? Because what you will eventually do in that case is if we ever do decide to do anything on our side of the property, you will have run off any potential of developers over there, because they're going, "Oh, my God, you're sticking with me a corridor over a half a mile long, and a creek crossing, and a sewer crossing, and a water line crossing?" And they would be asking the question, "Okay, who dropped the ball on that?" Because, you know, in my world, in fast development, I go and argue these cases with the cities and the towns, and they say, "Hey, I'm sorry, but you're the first one there. The first one there has to pay the bill." That's the way it is. You know, we had to do a $250,000 road宽 in our church because we added a preschool. Is that fair? I don't know, but it helped out Cambridge on their project up there, you know, so... And I get it. But I just want to make sure that y'all are aware of these issues that they haven't brought up. And the zoning, like I said, you know, Tommy's not here to represent the other side of our family. I just think it's a little premature, given these questions have not been answered by us, and every time we've made the phone calls, because we have made several conversations regarding this, and all we've got, "Well, we're just going to pay a fee in lieu of." And there's been no support of, "In lieu of what? We're just picking up out of the sky," you know? So that's all I want to say. I just... Yes?
Okay. I believe we wanted to hear, was it from your sister or someone else there?
Brenda Compton was going to be on behalf of my cousin Tommy.
Oh, okay.
Good afternoon, or good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Brenda Compton. We're consulting and a commercial real estate brokerage firm here in Garner, 1027 Highway 70 West, Suite 10600 in Garner. There's really not a lot more to say outside of what I think Dan has brought forth as far as questions. Tommy Matthews, the owner of the property that's known as the Betty Matthews Revocable Trust, it's about 48 acres, 49 acres to the south of this property. And we have been working with Mr. Matthews and his family, his brothers and siblings, cousins preliminarily over the last five or six months to determine what the highest and best use is for his property, understanding some of these developments were coming in, and really trying to see exactly what was going to come, be brought forth, so we could take a little bit better purview of what might be complementary to this, especially understanding that when it's all said and done, there's probably going to be about another 3,000 apartments and townhomes, single-family residents, et cetera, in that particular area. We're not neophytes in working in that area. We did the Centers property, we did the Beazer property there on 1010 Road. I myself have a family, we have a family farm on 1010 Road that's about 70 acres. And my family's about six, seven generations here in Wake County. So looking at everything that's happening along 1010 Road and the 401 corridor, and Lake Wheeler and points beyond, certainly deem to be reviewed seriously because of the sensitive stormwater area and the Swift Creek Stormwater Management land, as well as how commercial development will continue to flourish out there to support the neighborhood support services that are needed out there for these projects. So Mr. Matthews, he can't be here tonight. He couldn't be at the meeting on the 29th. And that being said, he respectfully requests the tabling of this matter till he could be here, and we could get a little bit more information, and put together some plans that we could possibly talk with the developer about to see how we can complementary, be complementary developments to each other, because there is definitely about 100 more acres between this project and the Sorrels project where, just before you get to Costco. And there's a lot of sensitive stream areas. This corridor that we're talking about, that will run parallel with 401, is going to be one that may impact negatively to the commercial components of this property. But we are looking at doing commercial mixed use as being one of the highest and best uses on this property. We just have to get a little, dig a little bit deeper in this. And of course, until the traffic impact study is done and completed for 2021, 2022, I think that, they said it should be sometime in the summer to get that, to really understand what the traffic dynamics are on 401. So with that said, we'd like to put forth that for the council's recommendation, okay? In consideration. Thank you.
Can I ask you, Ms. Compton, Mr. Matthews, just to clarify all the acreage? So can someone pop that map up? It's got the site outlined in orange, and we can, I can, we can see the land.
The Betty Matthews Revocable Trust is about 45, 46 acres, plus or minus. It abuts the Dan Matthews property and the JDS Farm property to the west, and it fronts primarily the Tommy Matthews, the Betty Matthews Revocable Trust, it's along, primarily along the 401 corridor. And then it abuts the Stevenson's property, Paul Stevenson and his family's property, and then the Foster's, John Foster, and then you go on to the Raymond Sorrels property, and then you go to Costco, which is Cambridge, and then you go on up to 1010.
The largest tract directly to the west with the, either the small acre, the pond on it, as Mr. Matthews referred to, you talk about what had the family did years ago where Denly Road is, that would be a connector one day, whenever, if and whenever that happens. And so he's talking about the alignment which is proposed here, and the alignment of Denly avoiding that pond don't quite align, or line up in a way that may serve best for both properties.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to defer to what Mr., what Dan has said. I mean, he is the one that has been dealing with that since 2009. But what I will say is, when I investigated this connector, it was Gabby of the staff sent me the plan, and it showed just a straight line that just went right through that pond all the way down to Denly. So I think that considering the wetlands and the creeks that run in and around that area, totally all the way up to where Costco is, there needs to be some serious review of how this corridor is going to look, because stream crossings are expensive, ponds, we don't know exactly if we've got perennial streams or exactly what the nature of some of this is. But I do think that you've got a lot of traffic, a lot of traffic that will be forthcoming in the future, and with 540, 540 is a toll road. So I mean, when you start thinking about this, there's just a lot of fluid parts here, and I think they just need to be reviewed a little bit more intently. And that's what we're requesting, just a little bit more time to digest this and really focus on that. And I think we have the land planners and the engineers in place to help us move forward towards that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any further questions?
Thank you very much.
I did want to say one other thing. Mr. Dillinger, I think he made some very salient comments about the land use plan, and I appreciate his understanding of some of these things. I think dense use, commercial, mixed use in that area is definitely something that needs to be reviewed in a little bit more serious manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Compton. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Russell Stewart. I'm at 103 Madrigal Court in Cary. I'm a commercial real estate broker. I actually represented the Buffalo family in the 401 assemblage that the same developer and applicant closed and is doing that project. And I just wanted to, to Mr. Matthews' point, I certainly, working in this market, I see a ton of out-of-state and out-of-town folks, and they come, they try to make their quick dollar, and they leave. I can tell you, the entire Buffalo family was so pleased with this developer. They do have a Maryland address, but they have shown a commitment to Garner and to this market. They have no plans, they are, they're not a merchant builder that are going to turn and burn and flip it. They've made commitments to the Buffalo family that they have upheld. They have, from my understanding, worked very well with Mrs. Bennett and her family. I just wanted to voice my support for the developer and this development. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. We're going to try to move to a recess here fairly shortly, but go right ahead, sir.
Good evening. My name is David Smith. I live at 1913 St. Patrick Drive, which is probably three-quarters of a mile north of the project. And I'm not... I did, one question I did have, though, I didn't hear if you said it, what the proposed maximum stories were for the apartments is one question I have. But I come here tonight, my main concern is that I feel like the Swift Creek Land Management Plan rules for over, you know, a year have not been followed, you know, or have been interpreted in a way that I think is questionable, to say the least. The idea of pulling out apartments from the maximum dwelling units per acre seems to be, just to come out of nowhere. I was interested to know when the first project in this corridor, or the first project in Garner where that application of the rules was applied. But the Swift Creek Land Management Plan seems very clear, it's six dwelling units per acre, and certainly apartments are dwelling units. So to just sort of randomly say apartments don't count toward, you know, they count toward your density, they count toward residential, but they don't count toward stormwater rules seems random. And I also wonder, has DWQ signed off on that, and have they signed off in writing to that interpretation of your code? Because I believe your UDO is in compliance with the Swift Creek rules, but it's the interpretation there that seems to be questionable to me. And I don't think, the intent certainly of the rules when they were written was that every development that come through be developed even at the six units per acre. It seemed in some ways a capitulation by the group that put those together. Most of the zoning, including Wake County, was zoned in much less density. I'm not sure they envisioned at the time that everything out here in the basin would be zoned to six units per acre. This one, you know, on your, on your, on the application says that it's 7.4, but, you know, I know some of the others are even, they're fixing to come in or even higher, you know, up to maybe even 10. But that's my comment, it's not to, it just seems it would be an awful painful correction to have to make should those, that interpretation be questioned and found to be invalid. So I was wondering where they came from, was the 401 assemblage across the road the first time that that idea that, or interpretation that apartments were not included in the density calculation, if that was the first one. Because I'm afraid it's the kind of thing where somebody said it, somebody repeated it, and now we accept it as fact, that you can just simply pull out half the units from a development and say, "Well, they don't count toward that maximum." So that's really all I had to say.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
One comment to that. I've asked a similar question over time, and I think one of the explanations I received is that apartments... That's how they, I don't know that, I've had similar questions about the density.
Well, if I could, it is odd, though, that in Garner's UDO, apartments are not a permissible use under any commercial zoning, special use, conditional use, any use at all. So if apartments are commercial, why would they not be allowed in commercial zoning? It seems like a play of words to me. And, you know, that's, it just seems a very questionable interpretation.
Okay. Thank you. Anything?
She want me to respond to that?
If you, if you feel like...
I mean, just very briefly, that is an understanding of all the municipal and county partners in interpreting and applying those rules. I've checked it upon my arrival here in Garner. It's the way the other municipalities had already been interpreting it. The reason being is that apartments can go vertical, and the thought behind that was is that they should not be held to that dwelling unit standard, because they do go vertical, that it was more appropriate for the impervious surface to apply. The other thing, conversely, is that for townhomes and single-family, it's very difficult to determine what that impervious surface is going to be in advance. So there is a, there is a distinction between when you're approaching it from an impervious perspective as to how you divide what is ruled by dwelling units per acre versus what is ruled by impervious. So I know it sounds confusing, because we use that commercial word very loosely in different realms. But for the purposes of that state-adopted Swift Creek Land Management Plan, that we as a group are charged to oversee, it is agreed by all the municipalities and Wake County that this is how we apply it.
Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate that. Council, anybody else you want to hear from? Seems to me we have a couple, two or three options, maybe more than that. But obviously, the recommendation initially was to refer this to the Planning Commission for Plan Consistency. That's one motion that could be made. I understand one of the persons who have questions about this has suggested that the matter be tabled in order for further consideration and discussion. I guess if anybody cared to comment before I call for a question further.
I think with the issues that have been raised, Mr. Mayor, that I think that because any development has to take a utility or a road or whatever to and through the property, and it seems like we've got across the stream, where we have a pay in lieu of, we got this, we got that, that we need some clarification, and we need some more, some meeting of the minds, or meeting, the conversations between the Matthews, the property owners to the west, to the south, and this project. And I don't think it's appropriate to move forward with it at this time. I think we need to get them and staff talking about trying to settle some of these concerns and issues before we move forward. My suggestion is, I don't know if that means we table it, or delay it. I don't know, I asked Ms. Jones what the appropriate thing is to delay this for 60, I mean, it's got to be a while. It's not going to take place in a week or two, 60 days, however long we need to do it. Further than that longer, I'm just picking a date.
You can certainly continue the public hearing if you'd like. If you give it a date certain tonight, that relaxes some of the advertising, not that, you know, it wouldn't be noticed to the public. But I would suggest you be clear about what you want anticipate happening in that time period.
We've had enough issues raised in regards to this road alignment. And I know, you know, Ms. Compton stated that when the town came through, just a straight line over to Denly Road, is that the best alignment? I don't know. I don't know. I know we have a policy about pay and fee in lieu of across the streams, but with the incredible amount of rising construction costs, I don't know if a pay and fee in lieu of is going to be applicable here. It may be applicable, but it better be an expensive fee in lieu of because of construction costs in the future. Now, the issue was mentioned about access or an easement to the, this station, pump station, I'm sorry. I don't know all the answers to that. Enough questions are raised that I don't know the answers to, and I don't think we're getting the answers to tonight, and I'm assuming my colleagues on here don't have the answers to, that they have questions to also. So I don't know if we need to make 60 days or 90 days, but we need to get some of these questions that were asked answered.
I have a question. So what would be the impact of a no vote on referring it to commission with... In fact, on the applicant's project, does it... That whole period is like, because it seems to me we have, that's sort of the main option is to not refer it, and then let them do what they need to do in the time they need to do it without creating an artificial timeframe for them to work together. So I'm kind of asking, what's the consequence of... To not refer it.
I need to look that up. I know that there's a consequence if Planning Commission doesn't come back with a recommendation to you, but I would suggest if you could take your recess now, I could look into that.
That seems like a reasonable suggestion to me, given the number of questions and comments that I've heard so far. And so if our attorney needs a little time to investigate that a little further, that might give us a clear course of action to take. Council, you okay with that?
Okay. Folks out there understand now what we're doing, so I'm going to call a recess of 10, maybe no more than 15 minutes, which means we should be back by about 20 after 9:00 or, or thereabouts. So, okay.
Okay, I'm going to call us back into regular session. I think the first thing I will do, and then I will hear from one other person who I believe is speaking for the applicant, but I'm going to recognize our town attorney who's going to give some suggestion recommendations to the council regarding the previous discussion and sort of where we are with this matter.
Thank you. In response to Councilman Dellinger's question about the impact of a denial tonight, a denial's not actually ripe at this time under both state law and the UDO. Once the public hearing is closed, it automatically gets referred to the Planning Commission for review of consistency with the comprehensive plan. Council cannot take action to approve a plan until either a recommendation comes back from the Planning Commission or a certain amount of time has elapsed. So the corollary to that is if you don't have the authority to approve something tonight, you don't have the authority to deny it tonight. However, you can continue the public hearing at which, and then it would come back with some of, hopefully, these answers, or these questions to be answered, and then at the time you close the public hearing at a subsequent meeting, it would then go to the Planning Commission for their review of consistency with the comprehensive plan and then come back. Ultimately, if the plan's denied, then the plan, the same plan cannot be presented back to council for a period of six months unless a supermajority of council would waive that that time period. So they would either have to come back with something different than this plan, or they'd have to wait. But that would be after an actual denial of the plan at some point in the future.
I wasn't seeking a vote to deny it tonight. I know that the action before us was to vote on making a recommendation to move it to the Planning Commission. And so my question was if there were a vote to not do that, another trial, it's, but it's, no, if they put that in a position of being on hold and then they could come back again for another public hearing. But what sounds like you're saying that the hearing, regardless of the outcome, triggers it going to Planning Commission.
The request for you to refer it to the Planning Commission is kind of a formality. The UDO automatically, once the public hearing is closed, refers it to the Planning Commission for them to take action, and that starts that clock of when it can come back for for an approval or denial. So I believe.
Go ahead.
Wait, yes, sir.
I just had a question. Obviously, we're not going to send this down to the Planning Commission. We'll get our questions answered. I think we're all in agreement with that. Mr. Mayor, I'll offer this up, then we can pick it apart, that we continue this public hearing for 60 days, which we should give them time enough to get together and do what we need to do and do due diligence, unless we need more or less time. Mr. Treesenberg?
I think the applicant would like to be able to give you some information before you take a vote on that motion.
Yeah, I didn't know you were going to make a motion.
Yeah, I want to get it started somewhere.
Okay, sure, sure. We can, go ahead, Jeff, I'll hear from you.
If you'll allow, if I can make just a few clarifications for you on some of these issues. From my perspective, it's completely different. I don't know that the list is that terribly long. I think there may be a little bit of misunderstanding as to what still has to take place coming down the road. In terms of the crossing location and the sizing that the neighbor was speaking to, that's part, part of that is part of the process of engineering that crossing to our engineering departments and our town engineers' level of acceptability. So part of that will include the flood study, which determines how large the culvert has to be. So we will not accept that fee in lieu amount until that amount of engineering has been done. Apart from that, the only thing that I really think that could improve our understanding of the current proposal would be for the applicant to get with the Army Corps of Engineers and DEQ to have them review this alignment. We know where it has to go. We have the endpoint on the other side, which is why it was just drawn as a, as a straight line in the plan because we didn't, we don't, we don't always do routing in the plan, just connecting two points. That, I would think, put the onus on them to to get that clarification back in time before it goes to, or before it's heard by Planning Commission and comes back to you so that can be figured out. As far as the utility access goes, you know, beyond saying that that's a policy requirement of Raleigh to have those easements in place, I don't know that we can get any more surety on that at this stage without going to full-blown 70% plans, which is the place that we'll get to, but was not envisioned to be part of this master planning process, other than to say and acknowledge that the policy is is in place and will have to be met. So those were kind of the main issues, I think, that I was hearing. I just wanted to provide some clarification to those for you to consider, and if you have further questions, again, we'll be glad to to try and respond.
Thank you, Jeff.
Mr. Treesenberg, the question, for my clarity, what I'm hearing you say is that the typical communications to DWQ and to the Corps of Engineers would come on later on in the process of of the, of the planning, the planning process for the site plan?
Some, some of it would, yes. But I do, I do think we can ask them to have that corridor crossing location discussion now.
Okay, and now in reference to, in reference to the utilities, that's a part of the more developed plan, the utility easements and things of that nature, which would come, which would come later on in the process?
Correct.
Okay, clarity? Thank you.
Clarification on that easement process. So there'll be easements certainly here with this proposal we have before us, but in regards to the property to the west, the Matthews property, so for them to connect to any of these utilities, they had, would, may or may not have to provide an easement for that to come onto their property. Is that what you're saying?
They will have to provide access to whatever sewer they put in, if not stub. If the stub is impractical, they'll have to stub with an actual manhole as close as possible. And then whether City of Raleigh requires a fee in lieu, I believe they do. Again, how the fee in lieu works, at least how it's written in our ordinance, you do it for half of the amount if in the future the price goes up, which it does. You know, the, the future developer is only responsible for their half. We contribute what's in our fee in lieu amount to make up the other half. Hopefully, we have extra in the pot. If we don't, as part of that approval, we've got to to find the funding to make up that other half because it used to be that we didn't get any money. They just stopped short, they built it as far as they could, and that was it. When the next developer came in, they would have to make that connection, and we potentially would have been on the, on the bill or DOT or wherever we could find funding for the whole crossing. So we know that the fee in lieu is not going to be what it costs in the future, but that's, we do our best to, you know, put a cost escalator in there, but that's only going to take us so far. But it is more than what we would have had five years ago.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to hear from someone who wants to speak as relates to the applicant and the impact, I believe, the delays will have. Did I say that right, or you?
You did, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council members. My name is Scott Copeland. I'm a principal of RST Development, and for the record, we are long-term owners of real estate. We are a family-owned, multi-generational business that happens to be located in Virginia and Maryland, but we are long-term owners, and we do not come into, into communities and get sites entitled and leave. So I want to put that on the record, and I think that's a very important point to make. We are the developers of the 401 assemblage. We have worked very closely with you, with the Planning Commission, with the staff, to complete or to be underway on a very successful project, and we feel the very same way about this one. We are excited to participate in this community with these types of developments. We study the market very carefully. We, we, we study what should be there, what works there from a market standpoint. We, we wanted to pursue commercial on this site candidly. The market doesn't support it. So this is what we have decided to move forward on. We feel like it is a great mix of property, of asset, of, of different product types that will support the market, and we look forward to moving forward with it. I'd like to speak a little bit about this fee in lieu because it is my understanding that the fee in lieu is calculated after the engineering is done, approved by the city staff, and a fee is then assigned. So for, for us to be put in a position to say that we're not providing a fee or that we're pulling a fee in lieu out of the air is simply not the case. You guys are, have to rely on your staff that directs us on what the design has to be per code, then we price it, the staff agrees to that pricing or criticizes that pricing, and then we all agree on what the pricing is, and then a fee in lieu is paid. We are not able to provide anything beyond where we would stub out and, and be required to provide a fee in lieu because the Army Corps of Engineer is not going to let us build through that area to, to nowhere. It's just not going to happen. That's why a fee in lieu is in place. That's what it's for. So I want to make sure that we're all on the same page that at this stage of the game, there's no way for us to know that fee in lieu, and in order for that fee to be determined, it goes through a pretty exhaustive review by your staff. We are more than willing to have a conversation with the Department of Environment and the Army Corps of Engineer to talk about this alignment. We have made concessions twice to this exact alignment. This is not where we wanted that road to go originally. We met with, through the staff, we got feedback from the neighbor, and we put it exactly where they wanted it, where the crossing is. Staff came back to us at a later date. They didn't want it as far south as we did. They asked us to put it in the middle of the site. We did exactly that. So from my standpoint, we have been as accommodating to the staff and to our neighbors as possible, and we will continue to work with anybody that comes to us. And we send notices out per the requirements of these public hearings and of these meetings. The person that was identified as the point of contact is Beth, who spoke to you earlier tonight. Beth has not been notified by any neighbor since that public meeting that we held. So all of this information that is coming to us, and all of a sudden, we have to pause everything for 60 days, 90 days, 30 days, which puts an enormous burden, an enormous burden on the progress of this project. I have negotiated a contract with Mrs. Bennett and her family that has no elasticity to it, none. If I'm not in a situ, in a position to go to closing with Mrs. Bennett and her family later on this summer, it won't happen. 30 days, 60 days, 90 days of delay before I'm just simply heard by the Planning Commission. I'm simply asking you to close this public hearing and to move this forward to the public, to the Planning Commission. Let them make their determination. I assure you, my first call tomorrow is to anybody who will listen to resolve some of these issues that I felt were resolved, but I'm happy to continue that conversation to resolve them. I got to get in front of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission will make their recommendation. It will come back to you. Then we get to do our site plan later. I urge you, please, to move this forward so that we can make, continue with this progress, and I do appreciate the time.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Mr. Treesenberg, anything further from you, sir? Okay, nothing there, all right.
Mr. Matthews' motion. Not a motion on the floor, right?
I, I've not made a motion yet.
I think he was planning to, but I didn't recognize what he said as a formal motion, but I will ask him now.
I was offering a suggestion up to start the process is what I was doing.
Yeah, so just, okay, I hear, I hear from one more person, go, come on up.
Same again, so, just want to clarify one thing. I'm sure y'all know Keith Roberts. Keith Roberts, engineer at the Orson and Timmons Group, which is their engineer. That's who I contacted because I contacted them prior to the meeting that we had. Is that not correct? Thank you. So I did contact their engineering firm. Now, let me clarify one thing that he is speaking of incorrectly. There's been a discrepancy since early 1800s of the west, northwest end of our property, the last little corner up there, close to where the sewer lift station will be. It's been a discrepancy for years between us and the Stevens, on and on. Never been an argument because nobody sold the land, doesn't matter. So irregardless, when they kept surveying, so they surveyed this property two times trying to clarify this line. They could not get it to work with our property lines. Just didn't work. There was about 100-yard section or so back in that corner, just, we had our plans, what it was back in early 1800s, there was a lake back there, Stevens Lake. It was a huge, the dam's still there behind Menreer, it's 300 feet long, had a sawmill on it. And our deed was that the creek, Pope Creek, was the line. If the pond or lake was drained, that was the line. While it existed, the line was the water line. That's just old school. That's the way it was back in those days. The dam busted back in 1865, and when it burst, then, you know, everybody assumed, okay, here's the line again, it's back here on the creek. Well, that was been a discrepancy since then with the line. Long story short, they came to us after two surveys, said, look, we're having trouble with this line, you know, what are we going to do with this? I said, I tell you what, I'll make a trade-off, and you tell me if I'm wrong. I said, I'll make a trade-off. The lines in the Neuse River buffer, irregardless, neither one of us is going to gain or lose from that, but it'll resolve it where y'all can move forward with your project, but you line your road up with my road that we've already done the flood study on. And they agreed. So they moved it, but they didn't line it up with our road. They moved it to accommodate their street design and their lots. I get it, but they did not line it up with our road. It's south of the property, so we would be forced to make a skew in what would be a preliminary, you know, pretty straight line. And we adjusted it because of the, you know, like I said, DWQ issues that we knew we had. There's a split in the branch right up ahead of that, so we knew that would be an issue. So to clarify that I am telling the truth, is I did talk to their engineer, we did resolve the property line in lieu of them lining their street up with us, but their street does not line up with us. That was the agreement. I'm just trying to clarify everything on our behalf. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, council, in my view, we've, we've probably heard enough information to decide which way you want to move at this point in time. I think we've heard from both sides. You've heard the requests as relates to the delay. So let's see, Ms. Jones, is there anything else the council needs to have before them to consider beyond what you've already discussed with us?
I don't believe so.
Okay. So let's see, I don't guess I've formally closed the public hearing, I guess that's what I need to do, and then call for a motion, right? Well, excuse me. Yeah, we may have a motion.
There might be a motion that would change that, so.
That's right, that's right.
Just to clarify what I, although you're being asked to refer it to Planning Commission under state law and, and more so under the UDO, if you close the public hearing, it automatically gets referred to the Planning Commission.
All right.
So if, if you don't want that action to happen, don't close the public hearing and continue it.
Yes. Okay, well, that's, that's what I'm inclined to do, and I'll see what motion we get as relates to the next form of action. So council, what say you?
Motion in secret rolls. We'll cut it from 60 days to 30 days. If they're not got this answered in 30 days, we'll delay it another 30 days. I move that we delay, I'm sorry, not delay, what's the correct?
Continue the public hearing.
Continue the public hearing until the second meeting in June, July, excuse me, June 21st, and get these issues resolved regards to whether this road alignment is, whether it's right, whether it's wrong. Staff, whoever needs to meet with DEQ, ABC, AFG, I don't care, get together and get the crap straight. Just coming in here and having, having a contest is just not cutting it. Y'all can either settle the issue, or we'll just let it go. So I'll make that motion.
I doubt there's much need for further discussion, but before we vote, I'll give anybody a chance to comment quickly on the matter. Clarification, whatever. Okay, a motion is properly before this, council, to continue this public hearing. I believe you said until June 21st, Mr. Singleton, is that right?
Yes, sir, the second meeting in June.
Second meeting in June. Okay. If you favor the motion that is before you, would you please vote aye? Aye. If there's opposition to the motion, would you vote no? By my, motion is unanimously passed. I think Jeff and his staff, and of course, the applicant and others, have some information as to what should happen in the meantime, and we will hear this matter further on the 21st and hopefully bring it to some reasonable conclusion at that time. Is there anything else that should be said, Ms. Jones? Okay. I appreciate the indulgence of all involved. Tried to be fair and open to all parties, and so keep working at it, bring it back on the 21st, and we'll see if we can get something done at that time. Thank you all for your time. Okay. All right, council, I believe the next item of business is under new and old business, and that is the LMG Master Development Agreement. We're going to hear from Ms. Jones and also, I believe, Ms. Howell, is she still around? Yeah, there you go. So I recognize you, Ms. Jones.
You'll just bear with me. Before you, in your agenda packet, you have a, a recommendation to adopt a resolution to authorize the execution of a master development agreement with Lansing-Melbourne Group, otherwise known as LMG, for the development of a site beside the rec center on Main Street and Purvis in downtown Garner. This would be the next phase in this project. As you may recall, town council issued a request for a development partner in the fall of 2020. LMG submitted a proposal in January of 2021, and last summer, the town and LMG entered into a memorandum of understanding to do pre-development and development planning work regarding this site with the contemplation that there would be a master development agreement, setting forth the rights and obligations of the parties for the future development of this mixed-use development. In response to the master development agreement that has been proposed, Councilmember Dellinger raised an issue about incorporation of some requirements for either workforce or affordable And as a result, LMG has proposed the following amendment, which I'm bringing up on the screen. Trying to bring it up so it would be bigger.
Here, you'll have to close that X box in that white window.
Here, you'll have to close that X box in that white window.
Hopefully you can see this. Basically, in addition to having a 60-day analysis, looking at higher density in the number of the residential units and parking, whether that would be viable, they're proposing that the developer, LMG, will include an analysis of proposed rents and how those rents align with the relation, with various housing affordability metrics. So that would be presented back. You have the option tonight of, you know, approving the resolution to execute the master development agreement as it was originally drafted, or to amend it by including this particular amendment. And Mr. Holton from LMG is available if you have any questions regarding this or the master development agreement.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Holton, do you wish to be heard?
Good to see you again. Thank you for having us this evening. Nothing specific. We appreciated the intent of the request and we did our best to sort of throw together something that we thought could work within the existing context of the master development agreement and sticking with that sort of 60-day additional information period. We thought that that would sort of coincide nicely with the density study that we were planning to do. So happy to include it if the council desires. But otherwise, we thank you for your consideration and are looking forward to working with you as we move this project forward.
Thank you very much. Okay. Ms. Jones, I think procedurally, the correct process would be to ask the council to vote first of all, on the proposed amendment. And then after they have voted on that, then we would vote on the full MDA. Is that right?
You could do it that way, or you could do a motion to approve the master development agreement as originally drafted or incorporating this amendment. So you could just do it as, you don't have to vote on two separate actions.
Okay, counsel. Any questions, comments to be made? Okay, yes. Yeah, please.
Just appreciative of LMG, looking at the request, put in writing a willingness to have the conversation. And that's really kind of what I wanted, is to make sure that you are committing to have the conversation. And we'll see what we come up with. That's kind of also, thank you.
Okay, any other council member here to comment?
So we need a motion, what you're saying, Ms. Jones, is to adopt the resolution to authorize the execution of the MDA with the proposed amendment as stated here in front of us. Is that correct?
Yes, you have that option, or you could reject, essentially reject the amendment. But they are, they have proposed the amendment and are willing to have that as part of the agreement.
I think we want to include the amendment. So I'll throw a motion out that we move to approve the resolution or authorize the execution of the MDA with the proposed master development agreement amendment stated here in front of us in regards to looking at housing affordability standards.
Okay, counsel, thank you, Ms. Singleton, Ms. Behringler. A motion probably made to resolution with this wording incorporated. All right. Any questions on what we're voting on? Everybody clear? So, okay, I'll call for the vote. If you approve the motion made by Mr. Singleton, suggested by Ms. Behringler, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If there's any opposition, would you vote no? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. The motion is approved. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir, for your work with us on that. All right, we will next hear from Mr. Beck, our finance director, on item two under new and old business. Mr. Beck, we recognize you and thank you for sticking around with us. Guess you didn't have much to say.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to everyone. Coming to you tonight with one final item to wrap up the audit process for the prior fiscal year, fiscal year 2021. If you'll recall, we had some delays with receiving our actuarial reports that we need to plug in some numbers in the audit and some other information that's in that report. So as a result of that delay, with the audit being submitted, we do have to submit to the LGC a written corrective action plan. And so as I mentioned previously, when the audit was presented, we have engaged a different actuarial firm that promises a shorter turnaround time on production of the report. We also have some internal reminders and things like that in place with multiple finance employees to make sure that we don't overlook the deadline to get that information to the actuaries. And there was a draft letter that was included in the audit. And then there was a slightly modified one that was emailed to all of you as well for your consideration. And so this process, the LGC has tweaked the process on these responses to audit things that they identify. And requires that the letter be signed by town manager, myself, as well as the mayor and the majority of town. Are in agreement with the responses as written, we would ask your approval to submit that to the LGC. And I do have a copy that I can get everyone's signature on after the meeting tonight.
That's a very minor point, but yeah, since everybody's here, I guess all the council could sign it, or did you say the bare minimum would be for the majority of the council to sign it, is that right?
Yes, preferably everyone.
Right, okay. All right, so any questions for Mr. Beck regarding this request? Anybody on council? All right. I think it's time for a motion to consider approving the written LGC audit response with the expectations that the proper signatures can be done even here this evening, I guess, right? Yeah, okay. Okay, motion has made. And who suggested it? Mr. Singleton? Okay, thanks, sir. All right. Any questions? Hearing none, if you favor the motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no, and it is so ordered. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Beck. Appreciate it. All right, committee reports, are there any? Public Works, right? John?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just a reminder that the Public Works Committee meeting has been scheduled for Tuesday, May 24th, next Tuesday at 8:30 a.m. in the training room. And the packet will be sent out to the Public Works Committee members this Friday.
Thank you, John. Yeah, you mentioned that, okay. Public Works Committee, you know who you are?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
We do.
Great. The 24th, thank you. Any other committee reports? Hearing none. I believe, I'm not sure if our assistant town manager is going to team up tonight, if one of you is going to lead on the manager reports.
Hodges will provide a report.
Yes, sir. So on behalf of Mr. Dickerson, a few items to make council aware of or remind you of. The Southeast Area Study Update that is being conducted by Campo kicks off this week. And that kickoff is on Thursday from 2:00 to 4:00. Mr. Mayor, Ms. Behringler, and Mr. Vance are representing Garner Town Council on that. During the meeting tonight, that has been changed from an in-person meeting in Clayton to virtual only. And so you should, you will have an invitation in your town inbox for that calendar note. But just note that that has changed to virtual on Thursday from 2:00 to 4:00. The first Garner Night Market of the season that is sponsored by the DGA will be on Friday the 27th from 5:00 to 9:00. Our Memorial Day Observance, which has already been mentioned by Mr. Matthews, but if anyone didn't hear that, that is going to be on Monday, May 30th. It is at 9:30 in the morning. And I believe that is a slightly different time than some folks are accustomed to from past years. And this is again, one of our, is back in person at Lake Benson Park. Also, you may have heard mention of a visit by Congresswoman Ross, who had planned to come a week or so ago to visit the site for our project that we were going to be undertaking with funds that she provided or was able to get for the town. That had to be rescheduled. They are now looking at a date in July, and that is going to be Friday, July 22nd at 9:30 a.m. And we will have more details to follow. But please mark your calendars for Friday, July 22nd at 9:30 a.m. And we'll be somewhere in the downtown area around the site of the project.
We'd like as many council members to be there as possible.
Anyone that would like to be there.
All of you who want to be there.
Yes, sir.
Okay. May do something like. Okay, anything else, John?
That's all that I had.
Mr. Hodges, just one more announcement, just wanted to make the council aware. With school ending in just a few weeks, the Parks and Recreation and Cultural Resources Department is gearing up for our summer camps. And so we're excited to host summer camps again this year, especially with the rec center being open for the full time. And just wanted to make the council aware of that as well.
Thank you very much. Be a lot of young kids scampering about that area over there, won't there?
We're looking forward to it.
Good, all right. Thank you. All right, I believe our attorney wants to give us some information. I'll recognize Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm happy to introduce you to Mr. Emmanuel Mihangos, who's seated to my left here. Some of you met him at dinner tonight. He is going to be working with me this summer as legal intern. He's a, kind of between his second and third years of law school at Campbell Law. And he lives not too far south in Johnston County, but has been a long-term resident of North Carolina. He does have an interest in planning and zoning, as we've seen from tonight. That's something that you all work on, on a regular basis. But I'm happy to have him on board. He started yesterday and I, you know, immediately gave him all of these LMG documents to review to help me with that yesterday. So it's, you know, trial by fire, hoping to give him, you know, a good, well-rounded experience in municipal law this summer. So that's my first announcement. You'll be seeing more of him.
Just a quick observation, could he do a quick study on some of these issues we were dealing with tonight and bring us back a solution? That's not really your first assignment, will it? Ms. Jones, do that. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
My other announcement is this morning, I recorded the deeds, so the GEDC property exchange is complete. You are now the proud owners of the Catty Road parcel to be used as the future Fire Station 5. And the GEDC is now the owner of the Tharrington Road parcel. So that transaction is now complete.
And thank you for your work on that. I appreciate that very much. Okay, questions for the attorney? Okay, hearing none. All right, I'll go to council reports, and I'll start on this end with Mr. Matthews.
Nothing this time, sir.
Okay, Mr. Singleton.
Let me tell you, if you get a chance to, you're on the WRA website, the Tar Heel Traveler, it was on tonight. Noticed it getting ready. They had a story about the Morehead Planetarium and the work that the Apollo astronauts did over there. They didn't, a lot of people don't understand how much study they did over there at Morehead Planetarium. Well, the director of the Morehead Planetarium is Dr. Todd Boyett, who grew up here in Garner. Right down Abrams Road, right down here, right? Abrams Road, right where Philip Street comes out. He grew up right across the street down the east side. He graduated high school in 84 with my brother. He has a doctorate degree in science education, was a school teacher at one time, and he's been the director over there since 2006 at the Morehead Planetarium. And he was on there tonight. Great, good guy. Coached him in basketball many years ago. But I just think it's neat when you see people who grew up here and have such an impact on, you know, so many people's lives. But I didn't know all about the astronauts, the Apollo astronauts, I mean, from John Glenn on up, Armstrong, all those men went there numerous times to study before they had high-tech ways of, you know, moving astronauts around and how they responded to gravity and so forth, GPS. It was interesting to watch some of the, what now looks like, you know, rudimentary-type procedures to them to learn, and now there's much more high-tech. But they went there to learn some of that. So it was really fascinating. And of course, they had to know the night sky because they're up there in space and you know the night sky. You don't, that's how they would, you know, that's how they would drive them, but that's, you know, that's how they're going where they are. They had to look out the window. So it was fascinating. Back then, they had cardboard cutouts at the window because they were in the building. That's what they were doing. That's rudimentary, it was, I'm telling you. You couldn't have a computer screen because you didn't have it back then. So it's a really neat story if you get a chance to watch that. That's all I have. I just want to mention that since it highlights someone who grew up here in Garner and has done a really great job with his career.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Singleton. Well, I'm going this way, and I've got my notes here quickly, and I'll see the other three in just a minute. I think probably most all of you know that this, in the last few days, we lost two major figures in our town community, two ladies that I had the privilege of knowing, maybe one more than the other. But the late widow, former mayor, Don Roeball, Ms. Patty Roeball, passed away. Haven't heard any specific information about services for her, but.
Next Sunday, vegetation next Sunday evening. And services on Monday.
Okay, thank you. Much beloved widow, and also Mary Lou Todd, that I know Mr. Singleton knew personally in regard to her previous position with the town. And she passed away, was it yesterday or the day before?
Still trying to find that details. Ms. Bass has been trying to answer to questions and having a hard time getting answers.
Just wanted to make note of that outstanding, outstanding ladies who made significant contributions to our town and are well-known and will be greatly missed. Ms. Behringler, I recognize you.
Couple things I saw in the Triangle Business Journal last week is that the Daniel Center for Math and Science has awarded scholarships to four students, and one of them was from Garner High School. And it's, the name of the scholarship is the Stephen Gretchen Norwood Scholarship. And they did not give the name of the student, but they did say that he would be attending NC, or the student would be attending NC State. I don't know if it was a girl or boy. But we, it's a very competitive scholarship, and Garner Magnet High School had a winner. The second thing I saw in Triangle Business Journal was that Rush Hour Karting is one of the top four meeting and banquet facilities for square foot of space in the area. So we are on the map. And I also have a question about the houses that the fire department's working on. There's one house on Jones Street, and then the duplexes and a house on Parker Street, excuse me, Pearl Street. When are those going to be completely demolished? They've been burned and, or whatever the fire department does, but.
They have a 30-day window to get everything cleaned up. And I know that Mr. Beasley and Mr. Paget have been working closely with Wake County Fire and the property owners to make sure that they follow through with that.
They're pushing it. Okay, thank you. That's all.
I'm sorry, the Pearl Street ones were done for training, but they were not burned down.
Right.
So that, we're waiting on an update from the developer, I'm sorry, yeah. And the Jones Street one, I think some exercises have been done, but once, once the, once the training burn has been done, there's a 30-day window to clean up that. And I'm sorry, I missed.
And I didn't make it clear, but the one on Jones Street, the burn training was done there.
One more coming of that one in a couple of more months, just to, while you're on the topic.
And just before I leave, Ms. Behringler, I believe I'm saying this right, I understand Ms. Behringler is the incoming president, chairman, president of the Garner Women's Club, isn't that correct? Okay, congratulations. Mr. Dellinger is next.
Yes, just one quick thing, this being National Police Week, on Monday evening, the Garner Optimist Club, I guess reinvigorated its respect for law banquet that had been on hiatus for a couple of years with COVID. It was kind of later notice, so the turnout wasn't what it typically had been. But I was at my Parks and Rec Advisory Committee meeting, so I actually missed it. That's where I was.
It is where I was.
I'm glad you all were there. But I want to thank the Optimist Club and the Police Department and everyone who showed up for that. It's, they're glad to reconnect with the Police Department in that way, and they're going to look at other ways to help them with PAL and some other things, so. Heard it was good.
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vance?
Yes, I'd like to give a great thanks to Public Works for a call response that I put in reference to, and I had, there was a dead animal on the side of the road in close proximity to a house that was vacant. And I made a call in, and before I could get back, back down the road to go home, they had already gotten there and cleared it up. So hats off to Public Works. And I'd like for us to also remember about the tragic events that have happened throughout this country in the past couple of days, in New York, in New York and various other areas. So let us keep them in our prayers. York, in New York and various other areas. So, let us keep them in our prayers as they go through this difficult time. That's all I have.
Absolutely. Thank you, thank you.
I might just mention one thing, after Ms. Behringer mentioned the scholarship winner. Last Tuesday, they had the senior awards for, at Garner Magnet High School, in which we went, because my daughter received an award. And one young lady there, who's active in the STEM, STEM program, received a SAS scholarship, $22,000 a year for four years at the NC State, and also the other opportunity to go into other educational programs and participate, and they may be paid for as well. It's, they seek further education, further than, just beside their, the four-year degree, whether they choose some type of continuing education. So, that's pretty impressive. I don't know how many SAS gives out. I'm sure it's several, but those, a lot of other nice scholarships were awarded also. You've got a couple of folks that are, were going straight into, be going to the Marines, have been accepted in, so that's a, that's very impressive class.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Singleton. Sure enough, there was one other thing I had, and I didn't write it down. Oh, I know what it was. Most of you may know that the, let's see, I think we officially refer to it as the museum at the depot is open certain hours of the week, and I believe I was told that if, you know, if this council and mayor wanted to try to set up a time for, they will do little guided tours through that, or of course, you can go on your own. But if the council has an interest in doing that, if you want me to try to get a date where we could all go down there to take us through it, if you haven't seen it, it's nice to see. Might want to see it again if you've seen it. Several of you might be interested. Is that right?
Yes, you will.
Do it on the night market night, that'd be convenient.
That'd be nice, yeah. I think right now they don't have any night hours, but I'll check on that and see. Okay. All right. Other, let's see, John, you've had a chance, or Jody, you've already covered what you wanted to. Okay, all right. So, I believe we've covered all the business tonight, maybe, okay, so unless there's anything else to come before us, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So do.
A motion made and seconded, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
And it's so ordered. Declare this meeting of the council to be ended, adjourned. Thank you all, council members.